Conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council rules of procedure as amended and adopted August third, twenty twenty one, reflecting recent recommendations of the U S C D C and adoption by the state of Maine C D C pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting I D eight eight two seven three zero zero nine seven nine two and password two seven nine one one seven or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford Maine dot O R G under email, city departments, city council. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Deputy Mayor Hurley as well as the moment of silence. I ask everyone else to please mute your computers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have to ask if there's anybody on there. I mean, I'm hearing this click and it's driving me a little bit crazy and I don't know if the people can hear it at home or not, but if somebody could just figure out what it is, that would be really great. I don't think it's my stuff because I didn't hear it earlier when we had our first meeting. That's better. There you go. It's gone. Thank you. I thought I was going a little crazy. Okay, first item on the agenda is the roll call. Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of the City of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, the city manager, and Larissa Ricketts, manager's executive assistant. First item on the agenda are the minutes from twenty-two dash one nine five dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. I will ask for a motion to approve with one correction on page two that changes the first, the vote for previous minutes to five in favor. And it was, it said it was six in favor with Counselor Brink abstaining, but it should say five in favor with one abstention and not six in favor. And I think that that's the only correction that I had. If there's no other corrections, then we'll move to approve with that one correction. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Any more discussion?
That was Jonathan, by the way. That was Jonathan.
Oh, that was Jonathan? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody's voices say the same, sound the same. Okay. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole? Is he, oh, he's gone again.
Well, he's, he's still up here, but.
I don't hear him. Okay. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Oh, there he is. Counselor Stackpole, are you in favor of this? Say yes. Did you vote? I don't think he can hear me. All right, I'm going to continue on. Twenty-two dash one nine six dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Brink. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole? How come he can't hear us? All right, I'm just going to keep going. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present, I'm assuming.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm back, but I'm not sure what you were voting on.
We were voting on the minutes, the second minute, minutes. I'm going to count you as a yes.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Twenty-two dash one nine seven dash zero one, order to approve amended minutes of the city council meeting held on Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. I had a note to this effect, oh, here it is, up here. I will just read this for everyone when reviewing the minutes of the city council meeting held on Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. A minor error involving a block of unrelated text that had been copied and pasted in the wrong spot was noted on page five. The minutes from this meeting are part of the certifications for a bond, so they must be officially amended and approved. So they are an accurate record of proceedings, the original version of the minutes, with the error highlighted is attached along with the amended version for city council, for council approval. So we are going to vote to approve the amended minutes of the city council meeting held on Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And I will just make a note that I think the only person who can't vote on this, this if, assuming everybody was there at that meeting, that would be Counselor Brink, because she was not a counselor at the time. So I will, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hanselman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martel, I think he got it. Okay, Counselor Brink?
Do I abstain or?
Yes, you abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five in favor with one abstention. Okay, boy. Throw the minutes. Okay, mayor's report, city council subcommittee reports, there are no city council subcommittee reports, and I have a very short report. The charter review committee held its third meeting yesterday. They're seeking citizen input throughout this process and have provided a link on the city of Sanford website that goes directly to a charter review page where there's a form to fill out to send the committee your comments and suggestions. All submitted comments will be distributed to the committee members prior to each meeting. You can access a bookmarked version of the charter on this page as well. All meetings of the committee are available to the public for viewing in the same manner as council meetings, in addition to in-person attendance in council chambers. Their next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April eleventh, at ten fifteen, and I just want to thank them. They've been working really hard and I think they will definitely meet their timeline. Uh, I don't think any other counselors have any other reports that they like to make. No one told me anything ahead of time, so I'm going to go right to the city managers' report.
I'm going to be extremely brief tonight. I'll send this report out subsequent to this, so you can have it for your records as well as to the media. Workforce development partnerships, we, I have signed a memorandum of agreement, it's not legally binding, but it's a memorandum of understanding with the Maine Workforce Development Compact, which is funded by the Harold Alphonse Center for the Advancement of Maine's Workforce. We meet later this week on Thursday with York County Community College, who will do the administrative side of this and provide the delivery of services. In short, pursuant to the agreement, the city may access up to three thousand dollars in scholarships in the community college system or twelve hundred dollars in frontline worker training and other benefits per enrolled employee. So the premise behind this is for not just a municipal entity, but for any employer that signs up under this agreement, they could, they can get, they can access this funding of up to sixty million dollars to serve approximately twenty-four thousand Maine residents to, to do workforce improvement and training and betterment. So looking forward to that. I'll be able to report more when we meet with the community college on Thursday. General Extraction Task Force has completed its work on the draft ordinance as far as offering the terms and conditions that we're going to propose. Our planning director, Beth Delavalli, is working on the final draft, the final draft of that. We anticipate that that draft will be done for April fifteenth, at which time we will, I would like to put that out to the city council to get their review before that moves forward to the planning board as early as April twentieth. But that review, that timing will be dependent upon the council's review of this first. Housing, big topic statewide, so I was at the managers' conference not last Friday, but a week, week before that, the first, first one in what, three years since two thousand and nineteen. Housing, housing, housing was the major topic for that entire day, other than one presentation on communications. But I did note that there was, there was a broad range of topics around housing were presented, topics ranging from, you know, zoning, land use planning, financing, the gap financing, the use of tax increment financing, both economic and housing, TIFs, accessory dwelling unit, units, urban infill, and addressing the need for the continuum of housing from low to moderate income workforce and market rate housing. I will note pleasantly that Stanford is seemingly ahead of the curve as we're working on virtually all of these elements, we have pieces of those going. And then the meeting also spent quite a bit of time talking about the state legislation, L D two thousand and three. I realize that's come out of committee now with a split vote, split recommendation. It continues to be amended. We had another version again last week. This caused, caused a lot of consternation as far as what's coming out of that. I will simply note that I find the difficulties is that for all of the strong and exceptional work that the city of Sanford does, this L D two thousand and three, some elements unravel that and it applies a universal fix and a unilateral determination on what's best, takes some of those elements away from the municipalities. So we're, we're hoping that final, before this is finally passed, those further derivations will be made. City administrative team continues to offer recommendations for that. If not, we will further adapt and realign our initiatives going forward in, in tune with whatever new legislation is passed. So I note that. Quickly on communications, communications coordinator continues to work with the revised our new website host on the development of a completely new website. Site map has been completed as well as the first drafts of the website mockups, the homepage, the secondary interior page and the design portals. Those have been sent to the city council, so check your emails. Those were sent yesterday, I believe. You can take a look at those and start to offer input for a future element on that. Um, let's see, also the in the know community survey that's been out there for just under a month now, that survey will close this coming Thursday. There's still our paper copies available at our libraries, the city hall and a few other locations around town, or you can go to our home, homepage on the city's website, or you can access Survey Monkey as I have listed here if you want to complete that survey electronically. We needed three hundred and seventy-eight to have a statistically valid sampling of the community and as of today, we're at four hundred and six. We're going to achieve that valid sampling, hoping that we get up to around four fifty before it closes out on Thursday. We'll start to sort the data and create a report and bring that back for the city council's consideration. Charter Review Committee has started its work. We've met two times or three times? I forget. I think three times now. We've gone through articles one through five and we're continuing to work on six, Article six, which is the budget, seems to be the most, the area within the charter that we likely will have the greatest amount of discussion on and the greatest amount of recommendations towards. People at home can check the city's website. It's on our homepage. There's a leader for that on the right-hand side, or you can find it at SanfordMaine.org forward slash Charter Review Committee. All of the work that the committee is doing as well as public comment, you can, you can lend public comment there. We've created its own page for this. You can lend comment into the Charter Review Committee process and everyone's comments and the work product are being encapsulated and put, put onto that, that webpage so that you can access the information there. But COVID update, continued to have the York County Emergency Management meets biweekly now. Adam Hartwig from the Maine C D C noted that transmission in Maine and New Hampshire are on the rise, given the new BA two variant. Hospitalizations have elevated slightly over the past week. Testing volumes are down as the assumption is that people continue to use their home test kits rather than having to go to laboratories. Therefore, there was only two hundred and forty-four new cases documented and our, but our P C R rate is now at three point four percent. So hours dropped week over week. New Hampshire's has climbed week over week. And Massachusetts and New Hampshire are leading indicators of what's coming to us in the near future. I would note that the vaccination clinic still is in operation here when the fourth, the second booster shot or the fourth shot in a series was announced. They did over five hundred shots the following day. They're currently doing about three hundred per day. Vaccination hours, and this is at the Marshals at the Center for Shopping at thirteen sixty-four Main Street, they're open Tuesdays and Thursdays from one to six P M., Saturdays from ten A M. to three thirty P M. And I've put the increased eligibility in here. So basically, if you're over fifty, even if you're not immune compromised, you can have the fourth shot, second booster shot, depending on how you've gotten that. If you are immune compromised, twelve years old and are immune, immune compromised, you can get the fourth shot as well. So I've got that in here. I do note that we continue to discuss the community level, which is the new rating by the C D C that looks at the hospitalization capacity and severity of the cases. Maine is entirely green, but the transmission rates have continued to change. So note that York County is dark red now. We were orange last week. We've gone back to red as far as the transmission levels are concerned. Opioid Recovery Council, so the city is part of the multi-jurisdictional settlement. We've continued to follow that and we're waiting out prior to May first, we will know what our anticipated payout will be for this year and for the next twenty-year period from the first major settlements that have already come to fruition. Part of that process is, I forget, I think it's a twelve-person panel, the opioids, the opioid recovery council that's being handled. As part of that, the multi-jurisdictional elements have the opportunity to vote on a slate of, of people. We're able to vote on four, so please note that our officer Eric, Deputy Chief Officer Eric Small is one of those four people that will be in panels. We're very pleased to, to have that occur. Then I won't go into this, but the government, the elements that are coming in the governor's supplemental budget that's being favorably looked at by the legislature, there's a lot of very positive elements in here for the state of Maine as a whole, as an organization, as well as for individuals. I do don't find anything on here other than what they might do with the educational aspect of it, that is going to directly impact this year's net taxation for us as the budget is under consideration tonight. But nonetheless, I've, I have that in here for those, those significant elements. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody have any questions for the city manager? Okay, we'll go to communications and presentations. Twenty-two dash two zero two dash zero one, update on the raise grant application process. I'm assuming Matt's going to do this, Steve? I see Matt Hill here.
Matt Hill's here to present on this tonight. Matt, do you want me to bring the letter up or do you want to present without that?
I was just going to almost read the letter verbatim, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Per city council resolution, the engineering division of the Public Works Department's been pursuing the cooperative application of a U S D O T raise grant with the Maine Department of Transportation and their consultant preparing the application. Over the course of two months of work, several details have either emerged or been clarified for which city leadership should be advised. The first, project estimates, budget and scope of work. Due to the uncertainty of construction project pricing that's been experienced over the past several years, Maine D O T has sought ways to simplify the project while also providing a more conservative economic proposal. Therefore, the component that included the reconstruction of the core of Central Park has been removed from the scope of the project. This also mitigates potential historical and federal four F complications due to the proposed impacts on the park. The remaining raise grant proposal includes Route one oh nine, Main Street from Lebanon to Emery, Washington Street, School Street from Washington to Elm, Route two oh two, Carter Street from River to the urban compact line, William Oscar Emory Drive, Riverside Avenue and Emerson and Main parking ride. The currently estimated result on the project that will merit the maximum raise grant award amount, amount, the raise grant funding from U S D O T in the amount of twenty-five million at eighty percent, and the twenty percent will be split evenly between Maine D O T and the city of Sanford. The city of Sanford has previously pledged approximately one point eight million dollars, being the total of the individual component construction matching funds committed previously for Carter Street, William Oscar Emory and Riverside Avenue. The difference can either be dedicated prior to the years of construction or saved from the locals roadway capital improvement program over time. Number two is that Maine D O T desires to advertise all the components of the raise grant as one project for constructions slated to begin in twenty twenty-six. Under one project, the federal right-of-way process becomes a stretched, becomes stretched to about twenty-four months, unfortunately. So it's a big slip on the schedule. We'd previously planned to start William Oscar Emory Drive and Riverside Avenue in twenty twenty-four and Maine D O T had planned to do two oh two and Carter Street in twenty-five. Both of those projects remain on track to do so in case the raise grant is unsuccessful. The current raise grant schedule would have a November twenty twi- twenty-five advertising date with a spring twenty-six construction commencement, and the combined project would have a completion date in the fall of twenty thirty. So it's notably extended here in this large conglomeration of projects. The engineering department and city manager recommend the revised agreement structure for two major reasons. One is that any cost overages will be borne using the same cost share percentage, being eighty percent federal, ten percent state and ten percent municipal as the initial. Traditional agreements have held municipalities sometimes completely responsible for cost overruns, which is really untenable given the above circumstances. The second reason is that municipal funds previously programmed for participation in twenty-four and twenty-five can be reallocated to other efforts, including other Sanford roadway capital improvement programs, such as matching money for additional Maine D O T partnership agreement proposals, funding the rehabilitation of Central Park as a municipally-led effort and, and other city streets and, and roads, local side streets. We've been talking about the industrial park, all with the appropriate planning, engineering and utility coordination, of course, having to go on beforehand. Finally, the raise grant application is due April fourteenth with a draft, final draft submitted to Maine D O T this week. The project has been, has garnered over thirty letters of support, including those from Senators Collins and King, Representative Pingree, Governor Mills, the Maine State Chamber of Commerce, the Maine Department of Health and Human Services, the Portus Naval Shipyard and a host of local businesses, organizations and city leaderships.
Thank you, Matt. Do you have a date that, I, I'm sure you told us once, but what's the date that they will tell us whether we got it or not?
I believe it was in August or September.
Okay.
It's in the nofo. I'd have to go.
So do we have two lists? A list of what we will do and when we will do it if we don't get the raise grant and a list of what we will, the, the, the adjusted list if we get the raise grant, because it means that there are other things that we will do. Because I'll tell you the truth, I think that if nothing else, I think that's information people would like to see, even a side-by-side. I know I would like to see it.
Yeah, we've been working on the schedule and the estimate for the raise grant pretty seriously, so I've not had a chance to go back and revise like alternatives for the roadway capital improvement five-year program, but it certainly could be done.
Well, once you get this in, I guess I'm going to ask Steve to try to make that available because I don't know if you've noticed, but that, the, the, the condition of our roads and what we're doing with the money seem to come up all the time. So I guess I would really like to be able to have a document that I could point to. And the other thing that I would like to ask you while I have you here, is there a number, that's the best number to call for people who want to report a pothole? Because I don't think that talking about it on Facebook is really that effective. So I guess, just tell me, what, what's the best number and the best place to report that?
Two oh seven, three two four, nine one three five.
Three two four, nine one three five. Okay, let's try to get that out there. I bet you Zendel will publish that for us.
Okay.
Hopefully, people will understand, because I'll tell you, you can also email me. I'm perfectly willing to pass on pothole reports. And contrary to belief, we don't drive all the roads in Sanford as counselors, so we don't see every pothole that exists. So I appreciate other people reporting them.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Go ahead, Matt, go ahead.
Just calling three two four, nine one three five, Monday through Friday from eight to four thirty is the best way to get it.
Is there a message like, so if somebody wanted to report on the weekend, is there a place you can leave a, a voicemail or not?
You can leave a voicemail, but we're not going to get it till Monday.
That's fine. I just want people to understand that they don't have to call more than once, that they can leave a voicemail and you listen to those, right?
Yeah, if it's an emergency, if, you know.
No, no, I mean on Monday when you come back.
Yep.
I mean, obviously, if there's a huge black hole and a truck, and a car has actually fallen into it, that would be an emergency that you would come back for.
That's an emergency, right.
Right. Okay, I'm really not trying to be funny. I'm just trying to, you know, like, call the people who can actually do something about it. Counselor Martel, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a question around potholes again. I assume you guys are actively filling those in. Do you have, do you have like a map or is there sort of a priority list or? I, I've been seeing a lot of chatter about it and I've, I've seen quite a few potholes, but haven't seen two, haven't seen trucks out, so I don't, I'm just curious as to what, what that schedule looks like and, you know, how that's coming along.
Uh, so basically, you know, as potholes are reported, we go and fix them. And from time to time, we are out canvassing the streets, but we're not going road by road, you know, searching and searching and searching, but.
So the best way is for somebody, if they have a particularly egregious pothole that they think is really dangerous and that is wrecking cars, you want to hear about it?
Yes.
Thank you. City Manager Buck?
So briefly back, back to the topic of the roads. We have the five-year plan that's in place absent the raise grant. We know what those roads are. What we have not yet fully flushed out is if we're successful in the raise grant, how that changes twenty-three, twenty-four, that, that is the revised list that will have to come forward. We can work on that between now and the time that the raise grant is, is known, so we can have that discussion. This, this is another, another one of those examples, not unlike the E D A money that was, went towards Sanford Net Fiber. You know, there is no free money, the strings attached, and there's additional time constraints that always come with that dispersment of funds, but it will allow us to, if we get the raise grant, the very positive part of that is, because that level of funding is significantly more than what we would have had with the car sharing with M D O T alone, we can divert our local funds back to our local side streets and put less of our resources towards the shared responsibility on the state roads.
Thank you for that, Steve. Absolutely. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Matt, you're all off the hot seat. Thank you. Okay, public participation for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here to speak for anything else? Don't see any hands, so I guess I'm going to, yep, I'm gonna go on to public hearings. Twenty-two dash one two three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Mr. Green Thumb for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four zero seven Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one five seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments on a municipal tax increment financing district known as the Upper Nassau Apartments Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. The district consists of approximately twenty-five point six four acres of property located in the Village of Springvale Lot, R five dash seven zero, R five dash nine one, R five dash nine four. Declare the public hearing open. Who's going to lead off, Steve?
I would allow Director Nyman to lead off as far as the description of the district, and we do have our legal counsel here that developed the district pursuant to the city's directives.
Okay, and I'm just going to remind the council that we'll be acting on this later, so this is for, to prevent, present information to the public and allow the public to comment if there's any public here to do so. Okay.
Thank you, Ma'am Mistracchio.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
If I may, sorry. I'm, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this project and encourage the city council to designate this TIF district as well as approve its development program. It does, within that program, ask for your financial assistance to cover extraordinary infrastructure costs, which will be explained a little bit in just a few minutes, but it's, it's a, the, these costs may have been barriers to past development, so we see that as a, as a stepping stone to getting this done. This is a long dormant, hard to believe, four decades since the, since the college closed, primarily wooded twenty-acre area in Springvale that is ready to receive significant multimillion-dollar private sector investment and really restore an asset there for the community that would provide much-needed market rate housing within the community. Our workers need housing. That's clearly a message that is out there resonating right now, especially in, in Southern Maine. Many of you familiar, we've had some conversations about this, many of you familiar with this site, with its three former Nassau dorms that were built from nineteen sixty-four to nineteen sixty-eight for some three hundred and fifty Nassau college students during that period, which closed, as I mentioned, in nineteen eighty-three. Uh, which closed, as I mentioned, uh in nineteen eighty-three. The Growth Council's been working with the current property owner for a number of years, going back to two thousand and sixteen. And we began serious discussions uh with these developers uh uh that are here tonight back in uh two thousand and twenty-one. Growth Council has met on several occasions with these developers to review their plans. And has favorably recommended uh approval for them. Um, and with your permission, Mayor, if I might, I'd like to introduce the two principals for Green Mars Development. Uh, Nate Green and Chris Marshall. They are not strangers to York County uh or the Sanford Springville region. I'll let them say more about their company and explain uh the project. Little more detail for you, and again, how it aligns so well with the community's comp plan for Sanford Springville. If I could, Nate and Chris.
Thank you very much, Jim. Uh, can we share our screen?
You can.
Okay. All right, it looks like, can everybody see that picture?
Yes, we can, it's perfect.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Nate Green, this is Chris Marshall, and we are Green Mars. And as you can see in the background, that is the current condition of the Nassau campus. Uh, just a quick background on Chris and I, we grew up in Southern Maine. Uh, I actually worked and lived in Springville for a few years, and so we're excited to continue uh working and uh moving this community along. So just a quick project overview, if you look on the right on the Sanford GIS, you can see the three parcels of this project. Uh, uses the R five dash ninety-one is the parcel with the three existing former Nassau college dormitories. The R five dash seventy is its uh separate parcel that we have under contract in order to get a second entrance for the project. And R five ninety-four is the last remaining vacant parcel on the project. Uh, a couple other points to this, so we are going to be taking the. Uh, three buildings and turn them to eighty-three market-rate apartments, so. And then along with that, as you can see along the back of the property, there is the Sanford Rail Trail. Uh, we're going to connect the property to that Sanford Rail Trail. And uh allow public access through the property to get into the village and uh uh enhance the connections for that. So where we are at the current moment, we have the land under contract, we have environmental work done, our architectural and engineering work is almost completed. Uh, we're working with local contractors to get all our estimates. And we have full commitment from a local bank to finance the project. The last part of our capital stack is private investors, and we're well on our way to achieving that goal and getting this thing done once and for all, so this. Uh, college is no longer vacant. And and we really wanted to bring up how much this project aligns with the Sanford Comprehensive Plan. Uh, we spent a lot of time working with Beth and city staff, reading through the comprehensive plan and trying to align the future of this property to it. Uh, there's four points that we wanted to bring up on this presentation, if you look down at the bottom there. You can see uh these four points found directly from the comprehensive plan, encourage development in existing built-up areas of Springvale. Uh, and if anyone is confused exactly where the location is, this is literally right behind. Uh, the Village of Springvale, you would never know it's there, it's in the woods, you turn the corner, all of a sudden it's there, so it's really gonna enhance that village and break it up from. Business before you get up the hill into single family. And then obviously revitalize downtown Springville and uh. Downtown Springville is has is in phenomenal shape, and we wanna continue to. Uh, trend it in that direction and add more people and more businesses to the village. Uh, we wanna upgrade housing, meet the needs of the community, we believe that there's a strong demand for market-rate housing in Sanford. And Springville, and we really wanna bring people from surrounding communities into Springville and Sanford to live. Uh, in these market-grade apartments. And then lastly, if you take a look at the comprehensive plan, you can see that this particular property is mentioned. Uh, several times in redeveloping and turning it into. Uh, some type of functional use, and obviously, this is the overall objective of our project is to make this property shine for Springville. With that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris here, and he's gonna get into our uh TIF.
All right, thank you, Nate. I'll uh try to continue on Nate's momentum here and keep us moving quickly, I know everybody's got a long agenda tonight. Uh, so we're gonna take a look at this tax tax incremental financing deal, uh, this is something, as Jim said, that we've worked with the Growth Council on. Uh, taken recommendations from uh the town, the city staff. Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna run through the details here, uh, and then we can take questions at the end, so. Uh, the the idea of the tax increment financing is based on extraordinary costs associated with the development of this property. So we had a very productive and and very helpful meeting with city staff in which they outlined the things that really need to be done that are above and beyond uh normal development on this property. So one of the primary things is access to King Street, so we agree as developers that this this makes a ton of sense. Uh, for this property to have the additional access point on King Street, but it obviously comes with additional costs. The construction of it of an additional road and then purchasing the land that grants access to King Street, so this property can be developed. Uh, with the that additional access point to a a wider road. Uh, beyond that, there's some serious infrastructure updates that need to be done, a two-inch water line, a fire service line, and a new sewer line. Uh, as well as the associated road and pavement work that needs to be put in. Uh, and then a a pump station with that as well, so this came to a total of eight hundred ninety-six thousand. Uh, this is the 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 total cost of these extraordinary extraordinary costs. So Green Mars is seeking a credit enhancement to offset the costs of these. Uh, so I'm gonna go into the details of this just in a moment, um, and. Uh, we'll we'll get through the the details here. Uh, so this this slide really focuses on the uh split of incremental. Uh, tax revenue that comes into the town between the city and the developer. So I'll try to go through this relatively quickly. Uh, the original assessed value is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, that's the assessed value as of the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the projected increase is six million dollars, so jumping right up to six million two hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then in this column here, the projected TIF revenue, this is the property taxes projected based on. An increasing valuation of the property over time. So the proposal is to frontload benefits to the developer to offset those extraordinary costs upfront. Uh, with then the city benefiting in the latter half of the agreement for approximately a fifty-fifty split. Uh, of benefit between the developer and the city, so. I will uh, I will leave this up for a minute for everybody to get an eye here, but uh this is a twenty-year proposal. Uh, we have the outlined developer TIF revenue uh and the outlined city developer or city TIF revenue. Uh, here in the this column here, I hope you can see my mouse, uh, the third from the right, and then the last column is the uh the city revenue. So pause here just so everybody can get a glance at this, we can certainly come back to it if there's questions. All right, and in conclusion, we just wanted to to speak to our excitement of working with the town of Sanford, we do work with other towns. Uh, Sanford has been an absolute delight to work with. Uh, working with the the city staff has been amazing, uh, your Growth Council is fantastic, the city council, we've we've worked with a number of times. Uh, and a special call out to Beth, Jan, uh, Jim, Mary, and of course Steve. Uh, we really appreciate all the time you guys have put into working with us on this deal, uh, we certainly feel welcome. Uh, as as businesspeople in town to to make this development come through. So uh, really appreciate everything and uh happy to to hand it back to you, Jim.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Mayor, are you taking questions now or uh hand the gavel back to you?
Um, is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor? Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add or anybody else wants to add to this? Then I'll ask if anybody wants to speak against. Nothing, okay, anyone else to speak in favor? Oh, Steve, did you wanna rate, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was trying to control the screen, get too many, too many gizmos going, I I apologize, so I appreciate.
I was watching you, I couldn't see it, I couldn't see anything, so.
I was talking French, I lived up north for a while. Um, no, so uh. A- as as your manager, I support uh the TIF district that's put on the table here tonight, as well as the tax increment financing and the credit enhancement agreement that's part. A- as well as the development programs, there's a lot of act, a lot of terminology used in there, but. It's a, you know, it is a well-constructed tax increment financing district, it's a well-constructed development program. The reasons I support it is that. If you look at the fifty-fifty split on that, which does not include, you know, the city's still getting the the original assessed value and the taxes on that, when you bring that in. Uh, it's actually the other way around, it's it's. It's fif- fifty-one to the city, but that, set that aside. Um, the reason I support this is that. You can either do nothing and give up fifty cents on the dollar for this new development that's coming into our compu- uh, community. But for the fact of 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 the tax increment financing to close the gap, it would not occur, right? So doing nothing is not an option. By by doing the uh credit enhancement agreement. In the TIF district as being proposed, it allows the city to participate. Uh, in the in its economic development desires, to have a development go forward that the city's long wanted to take place. And redirect property tax revenues in a fashion allowed by state law that that is one of the very few mechanisms that we can do this with. Uh, so the city gets the project that it wants to see. It uh gives up nothing in this because you would lose this through increased county tax. A decreased essential programs and services, uh, funding for our schools, and decreases in revenue sharing. If the project came in, you didn't participate, so for all of those reasons, I support. Uh, the tax increment financing district and the development program as is outlined in the documentations in the packet, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Being none, I will declare the public hearing closed. This item is uh an action item further on an agenda for the public at home. Might be watching, um, next item. Twenty-two dash one nine eight dash zero one. A public hearing to receive comments on a proposed amendment of chapter one twenty fees, chapter one forty-nine licensing, chapter one sixty-one marijuana. And chapter two eighty zoning, I will declare the public hearing. Open and I will ask Steve first to tell us why we are basically starting over um. This process in terms of public hearing and first reading this evening.
Yes, I'll explain that, so as you see here this evening, it's a public hearing uh for the amendments, uh, you know, this is a long time in in the work product, but there are amendments to chapter two eighty. Chapter one forty-nine, uh, one sixty-one and one sixty-one. The original public hearing um advertisement. All of the backup documentation in in one twenty, all the backup documentations for the amendments to chapters two eighty, one twenty, one forty-nine, and one sixty-one were in the packet. But the advertisement that went out only advertised the fact that there were amendments to chapter two eighty and it inadvertently did not list one twenty, one forty-nine, and one sixty-one. So the public hearing has been re-advertised to appropriately uh put those uh pieces forward. Backup documentation remains, and all of the work product that the council has looked at and worked on in cooperation with the the planning board. All of that still is the same and and left unchanged. But because of the uh inappropriate advertisement, we had to back that up, advertise again. So you'll have a public hearing, uh, first read this evening and then a second read, uh. I hope for your next meeting in uh uh April twenty-second. It comes for April, no.
Nineteenth, twentieth. It's the nineteenth or the twentieth. We'll figure that out, don't worry about it.
You'll have that as a, you'll have that as a second read at that point in time.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, is there any, uh, so I'm gonna handle this just like we did the last public hearing, like that one never happened, so. Um, I would ask that members of the public who wish to speak in favor first would raise their hands, I will give you um. Three minutes to say your piece, and then we'll go on to the next person. The council, if the council chooses to comment, will be under the agenda item at the first reading, further down in the agenda. Okay, so um, I see, is it Land Race Cannabis Company? Could you please, I would like you to please tell us who you are, your name, not just who you represent. And if you have the um ability to put video up, I would like to see your face, please.
Uh, my name is Lindsay Holden. And I represent Land Race Cannabis Co. Um, hello, Madam Mayor and council members. Um, I'm a partner in the ownership of the building at twenty-two Samata Drive, and I'm a partner of Land Race Cannabis Co.
Do you have video, Lindsay? I, I don't, I'm, I'm at home in the service, I don't. Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
All right, that's fine, I just was just wanted, thank you, go ahead.
You're welcome. Um, I'm a partner in the ownership of the building at twenty-two Samata Drive, and I'm a partner of Land Race Cannabis Co. that currently holds a medical and adult-use cultivation license. And an adult-use manufacturing license in Sanford. At twenty-two Samata Drive, we operate a medical cultivation room and office, we also operate a ten thousand square foot adult-use cultivation facility and an adult-use manufacturing facility. Offsite, we have two adult-use retail stores in Portland and Hollis. We are in favor of Sanford allowing adult-use retail stores on the five designated properties. These, the the properties on Samata Drive and off Main Street are run by professional businesspeople. Who have taken calculated risks and run high-stakes businesses. These locations are off the beaten path and not and will not pose a traffic or visual issue to the residents of Sanford. We strongly feel the allowance of these stores will not place any additional burden on the city of Sanford's resources. Any adult-use marijuana business is part of the most strictly regulated industry in the state of Maine. These regulations are are in place to set clear operating guidelines that must be followed. In the year and a half we've been operating in the adult-use market, we've had visits by the Office of Marijuana Policy a dozen times across all our, all our locations. This is not due to any compliance issues, this is the mer- the Office of. Marijuana Policy checking every aspect of our business to ensure compliance and operating procedures. Adult-use facilities. Are required to have every single angle of their facility and retail store covered by video camera. These recordings are kept for forty-five days and are accessible to the Office of Marijuana Policy on demand. All facilities are required to have burglar alarms that are reported to a company that monitors twenty-four hours a day. How do these guidelines help this city? For example, in a retail setting, a customer's face is caught on camera at at least three times in close proximity. Once when entering, once at the point of sale, and once when exiting the building. To meet requirements, our two retail stores are each a thousand square feet and require ten cameras. Should a theft or burglary issue arise, facial identification would be available. And I think it's important to note that with a strong security presence, people are deterred from committing a crime. I know some members have concerns about these retail stores being inundated with lines drawing attention and possible logos or signs being questionable for children. The state has strict guidelines that require businesses not to include any animals, cartoons, or anything attractive to children in a company's logo. In our stores, transactions take place quickly. In Portland, we see approximately a hundred and seventy-five transactions in a twelve-hour period. During this time, there's never more than a person or two waiting to be helped, and we operate for the Portland store with a parking spot, or excuse me, with five parking spots. I've shared by email. Photos of our Hollis store, and you'll notice from the street, it looks like any other operating business with one sign street-side. From the exterior of the building, you see six cameras in a well-lit parking lot. All state requirements. To enter an adult-use retail store, the state requires you meet one of the following guidelines to ensure no one under twenty-one. Enters um without an ID. You must have an employee check an ID at the door as a customer and before a customer enters. Have a dividing wall that will not allow a customer onto the sales floor until ID is verified. And as we have in Hollis, an entrance area that is closed off from the retail store by a door. Customers are required to show their ID to a camera in that area before they're buzzed in. These guidelines ensure no underage people are allowed in. Once you're in an adult-use retail store, all products containing THC must be located behind the counter where only employees have access. Or in a locked display on the sales floor. All transactions take place from the sales counter, all product comes into the store packaged in a childproof container with a tamper-proof seal. And no product is opened in the store. Our store and many others, you was, use a POS system that verify at point of sale. Or excuse me, verify ID at the point of sale and good and can detect a fraudulent ID. These systems also track product purchased. The state of Maine requires the use of Metric, a seat-to-sale software tracking system. With this system, there's no room for product divergence. The plant is tracked from the time it's twenty-four inches tall until the final package the consumer receives.
Lindsay, I'm gonna give you another um thirty seconds to wrap up.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
This also means from a, okay, this also means from a law enforcement standpoint, if product is found in public. It can easily be tracked back to the company who sold it and the person who purchased it. Undoubtedly, there's a lot of rules and regulations for. Undoubtedly, there's a lot of rules and regulations for adult-use marijuana. We've been operating a retail store for a year now, and I can say after fifteen years in regulated industry, in the state of Maine, this program is well-run, extremely accessible to business owners and municipalities that participate with the interest in protecting the consumer, community, and the businesses that are licensed. As a company, we support the city collecting upwards of a hundred thousand dollars annually in license fees to be put towards bettering the community. I hope the city sees these benefits in allowing this industry to operate in the city of Sanford, and I'm open to taking any questions when the time is right.
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, next on the list for public comment in favor is, I see, Cal Akers.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, can't see you. You don't have video either, Cal?
I can, I can put on my video. I'm actually at my son's basketball practice here, but I can.
Oh, okay, don't bother then. We don't wanna see everybody practicing. That's okay. I don't wanna see that.
They'll be, they'll be in front of me.
There you are.
There, there I am. Okay, great. Um, first, I'd like to say, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, my name is Calvin Akers. I am the, uh, co-owner of Wisely Cannabis, which is located at eighty-one Industrial Ave in Sanford, uh, and a potential licensee, uh, for twelve Samata Drive, which is, would be one of the, uh, the five properties, uh, uh, potentially included if this ordinance were to move forward. Um, I think Lindsay did a fantastic job kind of outlining some of the detailed benefits. Um, and so, you know, I just kind of reiterate what she had said, uh, and say that the benefit, similar to when we, uh, initially discussed the office space, is to provide a place for safe access for responsible adults to acquire their cannabis. Um, additionally, I'd like to speak to the social equity, uh, portion that continuously comes up. Um, and I feel as if, uh, you know, the city has done an incredible job being, uh, you know, relatively inclusive throughout the, uh, process of developing ordinances over the last six-plus years, I would say. Um, and anybody who had done, you know, research into, you know, who was involved in the process, um, who are some of the licensees, you could argue that Sanford probably has the most diverse group of operators, um, in the state. Um, another thing I would say is that the city should be proud of is that it's a relatively craft industry here in Sanford. So there aren't really any large-scale, multi-state operators with, you know, tens of millions of dollars in investment funds. Most of these people who are operating here started off small-scale, you know, kind of bootstrapping their businesses together, and because the city provided, uh, policy and regulations that allowed us to thrive, are now businesses that are successful in an extremely difficult, um, extremely expensive, and extremely regulated industry. Um, so I just wanted to kind of commend the city on that front, and, and that's kind of all I have to say for now.
Thank you, Cal. Um, next on the list that I see, I see, um, someone who's identified as iPhone Isaac. I guess if you have your video, if you could put it on, but I would really like a complete name and who you represent, please. And if you live in Sanford, that would be helpful as well.
Hi, uh, my name's Isaac Elwitz. I own Westbrook Creek, which is located at, uh, seventy-two Emery Street. Um, uh, I think Lindsay and Cal did a great job outlining the benefits of, uh, this amendment, and I would agree with them. Uh, Beth has done considerable research into the industry in Portland, and she has a lot of details, um, on that, uh, that I think were original concerns for the council that I think can be, uh, laid to rest at this point. Um, as far as it being a small craft business, like, uh, my business was originally located next to Cal's when we were first starting. Um, I don't know, that, all the way back in two thousand and fifteen, and, uh, we spent a lot of time working with Beth to help develop, uh, the language for the ordinances. And Sanford probably is the best community to locate your business in the entire state because of that, but we've also limited it to the, only the eight properties that it can be. So it's not necessarily a cannabis mecca, which is a good thing. And I think that if the five, uh, properties that, um, have conditional or approved uses for retail were allowed to have, uh, adult-use retail there, you would not, uh, even really notice the difference from the existing operations. And it would be a considerable, um, licensing, uh, fee that would be collected by the city, uh, and that would be on an annual basis. So, um, I speak, uh, in favor of the ordinance. Um, and I hope it passes, and I would be a potential licensee, uh, for seventy-two Emery Street. So, thank you. And if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to Beth and get my contact information to, uh, discuss with any questions with me further. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac. Next on the list for public comment, um, in favor, I'm assuming, is Justin. Can you please identify yourself, and if you have video, could you please put it on?
Uh, yep, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I just can't see you.
Uh, it should be. I'm having a hard time with my computer. Um, hi, my name is Justin. I just wanna thank you guys for letting me speak.
What's your last name, Justin?
Uh, Graves.
Okay, thank you.
I live in Springvale. I'm a owner-operator of Salty Cultivation at seventy-two Emery Street. Um, where I employ seven residents of the city. I used to actually work for Isaac next to Cal and started my own thing, uh, below. Basically, as Cal described by bootlegging and to, uh, bridge off of the craft industry. Um, in Sanford, you know, we have the leaders here, and I, uh, support the proposed changes, and I hope that we can get, um, you know, it underway with reasonable time before, um, you know, I guess, uh, yeah, so I support it, and I support everybody in the town. Everybody in code enforcement's been wonderful. Patrick, Jamie, uh, Alex, Beth, uh, Mary Hastings, and the Economic Growth Council. And, uh, yeah, I just appreciate the opportunity to be here, be in Sanford and work in a town. I think, uh, I think Sanford has a pretty strong community. I think, I think we're known for growing some of the best weed, and, um, there's a lot of great businesses here to, to build and work with. So, thank you, everybody, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
God, so bad.
Is there anyone to speak against? Uh, Diane, are you, uh, speaking against? Diane Connolly?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, can I put some comments in, please?
Sure, that, you're, you're, this is the time where the public can, can, this is the against portion.
Okay, my name is Diane Connolly. I'm a resident of Springvale. My comments are not those of the position that I sit on the planning board there of my own. I do not really like this, having marijuana retail stores in the city. However, if you're going to have them, pu, limit them to two and put them on the outskirts of the city. We do not need marijuana stores in the downtown core on the Emery Street property area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else to speak against? Seeing none, then I will declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, twenty-two dash one-two-four dash zero-one. Hearing no objection, I will consider the consent agenda approved. Old business, there is none. New business, twenty-two dash one-eight-zero dash zero-one. Order to approve a municipal tax increment financing district known as the Upper Nassau Apartments Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District pursuant to the long-form order, contained at Exhibit D, excuse me, to the development program contained within the council meeting materials. Um, we've heard the public hearing. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve, and then we will discuss following that.
Move, we approve. Move, we approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, second by Counselor Brink. Discussion. Is there anybody who would like to make a, I see Counselor Hanselman. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, clarification from, um, Steve in regards to the financial plan, um, with a, a third of it, uh, being designated for fire station buildings. And I'm very optimistic that we'll come up with a, a reasonable approach that's, um, supported by our community for our fire stations. But in the event that that weren't to happen in this, it's a long timeframe also. But in the event that were not to happen, are those funds literally tied up and can't be used for any other purpose or other economic development because of the way this is structured?
Uh, there, so our legal counsel is here tonight, but my understanding is that they are not tied up. In your development program, you're putting the, uh, the allowed uses, your, your anticipated allowed uses for qualified cost in your development program. Let our legal counsel speak to that, please.
Sure, yes, that's exactly right. Um, this is essentially, these three options are your menu of choices um, from which the city can decide to undertake or not to undertake in the future. If you don't undertake them and you find yourself without enough options and more TIF revenues than you have available uses, the city can always decide to amend the district and reduce the captured value percentage so long as you're maintaining any obligations you have contractually under a credit enhancement agreement. Simply with respect to the city's, uh, portion, you can always decide to do that, or amend the district so that you add, um, new available uses that, that we hadn't, you know, thought of at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? Um, Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, well, I lent, I lent comment as far as the support as your manager for the structure of this, uh, tax increment financing district, as well as a credit enhancement agreement, uh, and the, the city's willingness, uh, to, to be one of the leaders in working with developers to achieve, um, you know, market-rate housing and other continuums of housing within our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I just wanna point out to the, for the public, um, that this is just the first step in this development. We will see this again as part of a contract zone agreement that the council will have to sign off on, and we'll have a better sense of what that whole, um, district might look like. But, um, it will be nice to see this, this get underway. So we're kind of excited about it as a council, I think. So if there's no more discussion, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm gonna call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Sure, why not? Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That is unanimous vote.
It's getting a little dry in here.
Oh, tell me. Um, okay, twenty-two dash two-zero-eight dash zero-one. Order to authorize an abatement of outstanding twenty-twenty-one real estate taxes for properties identified as Tax Map R-12 Lot Two, located at twelve-seventy-four Main Street and Tax Map R-12 Lot Twenty-One at twelve-eighty Main Street in Sanford due to the city purchasing the property. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Um, Steve, do you just wanna, and I know that this is a pretty cut-and-dry thing, but just for, for the benefit of everybody watching, could you just tell us all what we're doing here?
Yes, so the city purchased using, uh, ARPA funds, uh, this, these two parcels of land for a future construction site for one of two of the, the city's, uh, fire departments that will come in the future and will be voted on by voter referendum. Uh, pursuant to the purchase of the property, uh, the taxes are prorated at time of closure. So that portion that's, uh, allocated back to the city for the partial tax year, obviously, the city will not be paying taxes to itself. So in order to clear those from our tax rolls, uh, there is the need to abate those said taxes. That is the motion this evening. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by the council that's necessary? Seeing none, hands up, and I will call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is the unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, if I skip something, just call me on it because it's, there's a lot of stuff on here, so it's easy to get past something. Twenty-two dash one-eight-two dash zero-one. Order to accept the low bid from a Rundle Ford for an airport pickup truck with plow and sander in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. I, I'll tell you the truth, I'm just gonna ask for a motion to approve. We'll have the, the information, but I think it's pretty clear from the, um, um, the explanation of the, the agenda item, what it is. So do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley, second by, second by Counselor Stackpole. Um, is, who's gonna do this, Steve? Matt?
No, Director Navi is here.
Airport. Right, I, I missed that. Okay, Allison?
Good evening, I'm Allison Navi. I'm the airport manager of our Sanford-Tecos Regional Airport. Um, as you said, this is very straightforward, followed the city's purchasing policy to go out to bid for a new pickup truck. Um, a Rundle Ford was the low bidder in that process, and, uh, this will replace our pickup that's twenty-two years old and very well-loved, but time to be put away.
Okay, any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Um, just to mention the payment for this, all is covered through offsetting funds that we received through COVID, um, grants from FAA. So no taxation involved.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is the unanimous vote. Okay, twenty-two dash one-eight-seven dash zero-one. Order to approve the contract with McFarland Johnson in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred dollars to perform a, an airport layout plan update with narrative to be signed upon receipt of an FAA grant offer. I won't ask for a motion until we hear this explanation because this is, um, something I would really like us all to hear first. So I assume, Allison, you're going to be presenting.
Yes. Okay, so this one is, this is a typical FAA, um, airport improvement project grant. So we do a five-year CIP that's separate from the city's CIP with FAA and the Maine Department of Transportation, and this has been programmed in there, um, for some time now. So we approved McFarland Johnson to be the contractor for this. Um, they're a consulting firm for this particular project through an FAA, um, Request for Qualifications project. So that's how we came up with McFarland Johnson as the engineering firm. And then whenever you go to do, um, a federally funded project, you have to get an independent estimate for the contract for the consulting firm. Um, and that independent estimate is come up with, there's a couple of different firms, um, that do those estimates for us, and that is derived from a scope of work. So we come up with all of the different things that consulting firm is gonna do with us to be able to give us the deliverable of that ALP update and narrative. We give that scope of work to, um, the independent fee estimator, and then we also give them a whole spreadsheet that has all of the different positions that are involved within McFarland Johnson, and they go through, and in this case, um, Carol went through, and she estimated for each different task within that scope of work, how many hours, um, that it should take them to be able to do it. So what ends up happening is I get that independent fee estimate, and then I also get the proposal from McFarland Johnson, and then that allows me to have some really good, robust tools to negotiate with. So what FAA wants to see is that negotiation process to take place to then get us to a place where we have, um, a good, healthy number for that scope of work. And it has to be within ten percent of what the independent fee estimate is. So you can see here, I filled in, um, the numbers just from the original, this is the first go-around. Um, the other thing I wanna mention is that we're on a tight timetable for this one because FAA actually moved up their grant approval, or their grant application, rather, process, so that, that's due April eleventh. Usually, it's due, um, the first week of May. So we have a couple weeks got shaved off of our timeline for that. Um, so it's important to, to get this one figured out. So the last couple of days, I've had, um, multiple meetings with McFarland Johnson and with, um, Carol for the independent fee estimate, and her estimate seemed really low. So you can see the, the ten percent cost range there was about the ninety-five thousand to the one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. Um, and MJ's number was a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So when they're that far off, it's usually a pretty good indication that there's, there's some kind of misunderstanding, and that's what had happened in this case. So we went back through and explained, we went through the scope of work with a fine-tooth comb so that it was more apparent to the estimator exactly the level of work that we wanted to get out of this project. So from FAA, we have a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of AIT entitlement funding to send on this. So they'll pay ninety percent of the project, and then Maine DOT contributes five percent, and then we contribute the remaining five percent. So, the $164,000, we got them to come down a little bit. So that's the number that you read off in the, in the agenda item. So that's, I think it's 163,200 was the number that we finally agreed upon after we revised the back and forth. So what happens from here is that I compile a record of negotiation for FAA to go with the grant application. We show them the independent fee estimate, we show them McFarland's proposal, and then where we came up with the contract amount. That contract does not get signed by us until we get the grant offer. So unless we get the grant from FAA and DOT, we're not going to spend this money and do this project. So the only amount that we're going to pay for this is 5% of the total cost, plus the independent fee estimate, which was $1,800. So that, that leaves us somewhere, I believe we budgeted in the, um, in the, in the CIP budget for the next fiscal year about, about $7,000 to do this project. So the deliverable for this project is very important for us because the airport's been growing and developing at such a high rate that we really need to look at all the different areas that are remaining for development and figure out a really clear and orderly way that we want to go about keeping that going. So when people show up and they want to build more hangars, when new businesses come, that we're putting them in the right place, and then we have a cohesive plan to be able to do that. So that's what this project is going to give us. It's going to update all of our maps, and it's going to give us the narrative that FAA wants to see that supports why we need an apron of such a size to accommodate such aircraft, and things of that nature.
Thank you, Allison. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Hanselman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, well, I'm going to give that one to Counselor Stackpole. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion or questions by the council? I don't see any. I think it was pretty clear, Allison, good job. So, seeing no questions, I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Okay. 22, excuse me, 22-133-01, approve a series of special events at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport concerts hosted, concerts hosted by Pilot's Cove Cafe. Um, I think I'll just wait and you can just give us the update on this, and then we'll see if there's a motion to approve. Go ahead, Allison.
Very good. So Pilot's Cove has proposed a couple of special events. So the two that are on deck for, that we're seeking approval for this evening are June 8th and June 16th, um, or June 11th and the 16th, pardon me. And those are concerts that are, that really rise above and beyond the scope of approval that has been designated to the city manager and the airport manager. So in the past, approval was delegated so that if we were going to have a fly-in or some kind of a, a more typical type of special event, that Steve and I would make sure that it was taken care of and handled appropriately, and we could just do it that way. This, these rose to a different level, so we brought those before the subcommittee. They've gone before the Airport Advisory Committee, and then now we bring them before the council for a, for a special event approval. We had a really good meeting with the Police Department, Fire Department, and Code to talk about all the different parts and pieces that will go into the meeting so that it, go into the events, rather, so that they're orderly and safe for everybody. What these will do is take up about half of the parking lot in the terminal building area. So there's a complete plan for all of this, where everything's going to go, how it's going to be handled, where the points of entry are going to be, how many parking spaces we needed, where those go, the number of police officers that will be there. So, Daniel Bowden's on the call also tonight, in case you have any questions for him. But I know that he has already gone through and done the requirements for the FAA submission to OEA AAA for the new construction or alteration on the airport, which is the stage itself. So we submitted that to FAA to make sure that it's not any kind of an obstruction. And then the police officers have already been requested for both of those events so that we will have a police presence there to help with crowd control, and then also to help with parking and, and wayfinding to go back and forth. So all of the access to the airport will be maintained through Gate 3, so tenants can still come and go. And it should work, it should work very well over there for that. So we've done a really good comprehensive review of this, kind of similar, not quite to the same level, but similar to years ago when we used to do the model jet rally, and we would have, you know, 20,000 to 24,000 people show up over the course of the weekend. This was a, a similar endeavor that we took upon ourselves to meet with all the different parties and make sure that we're covering all the bases so that everybody's happy with the way the setup's going to be. So again, tonight, just looking for those two specific events, nothing further than that. After the first event, which is on a Saturday, that follows Monday, we have scheduled a hot wash meeting so that everybody will get around the table again, talk about what went well and what could be improved for the next one, and make any appropriate changes if we need to. And then once we get past that point, if another venue or another performer wants to come to the airport, then we can cross that bridge when we come to it, and we'll come back to the council for further approval.
Thank you, Allison. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
A second then.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. And discussion by the council? I see Counselor Martel's hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Martel.
I just had a quick question around parking. They mentioned something about the Eldridge Lumber Part Lot. Will that, is that expected to be completed by the time these concerts start taking place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So those will be available?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions by counselors or comments? I don't see anybody from the public with their hands up. I'm going to just move on. Dan, it's not that we're not interested, it's just that we got a big event, a, a big agenda, so let's just, I'm going to call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next page. 22-190-01, ordered to accept the bid from Affinity LED Light for parking area lighting at the Midtown Mall up to $53,000. Um, let's have, I think it's Ian that's going to present?
Yes, I'll try to make this quick. This is replacing poles and lighting at the Midtown Mall. The money is coming from the match of the CDVG project. This match was provided by Partners Bank, and it, it should improve the, the quality of lighting and security and, and look significantly better at the Midtown Mall. As far as the bid goes, this is very unique work. It's line work. You're limited to people that can work on live wires. It's not like an electrician. We've worked with Affinity LED in the past. I have sought other bids, but unable to get other additional bidders. I'd expect the work to be done sometime in June. We've, we've already ordered the equipment, but at this point, we're, we're waiting on poles, and you've heard me say that many times. We're, we're waiting on poles. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any more discussion by the council? Being none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Uh, 22-188-01, recommendation from the Budget Committee on the municipal and school budget for fiscal year 2223. Who is going to begin this, Steve?
We have Budget Committee Chairman Wesley Davy here this evening to give a presentation. Wes, would you like to share your screen, or do you want me to share the screen for you and I can scroll through as you go through the slides?
I can share the screen. That, that would be great.
Make sure you have co-host. I'll make you co-host. Be just a second, you should be good to go. I'll stop my share.
Okay, let me just get... Maybe not. So my apologies. Be just one second, and I'll have this ready to go.
That's fine, Wes. We have all the time in the world.
Oh, I know you do, and I appreciate that. Okay. Can you see the screen?
We can. It's perfect.
Okay, so, I just need to go back one. Okay, so... For this year's Budget Committee, it was, uh, I've served on this committee for a few years, and I found that this year was one of the most unique experiences on the Budget Committee. We had three new members to the Budget Committee this year, which was great, seeing some fresh perspective. And then we had, of course, the council members who have had experience on the Budget Committee before. So, how I've done this presentation, I know that you've all seen the original presentation for the city manager's budget. And so, I've laid this out so that we can review any changes that were presented during the Budget Committee meetings, as well as any discussions that we had during the process. So... So what we had this year is, we had a unique situation, as I said, with an increased federal and state funds, as well as grants that were available for use for the, for this year, as well as upcoming years. And so our goal as a committee was, with this budget, was to utilize these funds while trying to minimize the impact that we could see in future years. So, on the municipal side, additions to the budget included three positions that would be paid for by ARPA funds for the next three years. This is the two SRCC dispatch positions for a total of $179,630, as well as the Police Department Social Worker for $110,000. And then we also had a COPS grant, which covered the officer training and equipment for $41,666. And Steve, feel free, City Manager, feel free to correct me if, if I misspeak on any items or numbers as we go through this. So as a committee, we wanted to really take advantage of any of the federal or state funds, so these ARPA funds, to provide additional staff for the dispatch. We were also very much in favor of the social worker for the police force and bringing on the additional officer through the COPS grant. And we did this knowing that these costs would need to be covered after the grant funds and the ARPA funds were depleted. So during our process, you'll also see that we have adjusted revenue totals. So, the city manager was able to provide adjusted revenue totals that increased by a total of $897,371. It was done in two increments, and this was provided to him by trusted sources, and the Budget Committee voted to accept these adjusted revenue totals as part of the proposed budget. This additional revenue is able to provide additional funds to the roadway infrastructure, as well as a couple of other positions, and achieve this with a reduction to taxation. One of the, one of the topics that we discussed on the municipal side was the addition, was the addition of the Assistant Fire Chief position. We talked through this extensively. We also talked about not spending all of the additional funds that we've received, maybe trying to, to put some away. But then we voted unanimously, or we agreed unanimously not to remove any of the positions that were in the, in the proposed budget prior to bringing it to vote. So the Budget Committee wants to recommend to the City Council the following municipal budget. So this gives a total of municipal appropriations of $31,597,155, with a capital reserve of $4,264,224, accepting the municipal revenue total of $16,696,142, use of undesignated funds in the amount of $850,000, with a net to be raised by taxation of $18,315,237, which is 11,745 less than last year, or a negative 0.06%. So, I guess at this time, I do have the standard question slide at the end, but I think it makes sense before moving from the municipal to the school budget to see if there are any questions before I move forward.
Are there any questions by counselors? I see Counselor Martel has his hand up. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, I had a question around the additional headcount. Will those be added? Is, are you factoring in things like the healthcare and pension, that kind of thing? Will they be added to that?
Yes, as far as, all of the positions that were brought to us in the budget were brought at full cost. So including salary, wages, or, excuse me, wages, benefits, and the full compensation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we go on to the school? Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if it's best addressed here or on a next agenda item when we're looking at the tax impact projections, but I just had a question about where the ARPA funds are and the use of those funds, meaning... So again, I guess I'm not sure if it's better now or when...
Why don't we wait and we do that? Let's, let them do their presentation. If we have questions for the Chair of the Budget Committee, let's, let's ask him. But when we get into the nitty-gritty, we'll have our opportunity under our discussion, I think, unless somebody disagrees, but...
That's fine with me. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. All right, any other questions for Wes? I don't see any, Wes, so continue.
All right, thank you so much. So, now we'll move on to the school portion. For this year's school budget, it was also very unique. We saw additional state subsidy funding for student-to-teacher ratios, as well as funding for the, for the economically disadvantaged. That came out to an increased state subsidy funding of $1,196,726. The budget also contained a three-year plan for spending of the ESSER funds. We had a lot of discussion around these positions, and the number in the slide is not the total of the ESSER funds. So, when we talked about the ESSER funds, we talked about all of the positions that were filled using the ESSER funds, and that it was determined that any positions funded by this money were identified as temporary positions that would last as long as the funding was available. So the amount that I have in the slide here, this is what the difference was at the end of, or so in FY 2024, after the funds were spent. So, that left an addition... that left an additional one hundred nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, that would either require additional funding or reduced expense to offset that amount. And one of the focuses that we had was not strictly planning the budget for this year, but trying to trying to be responsible with what would be coming in, in future years as well. We also talked about the school fund balance, which has increased significantly since 2019 and is projected to be one point nine million at the end of FY twenty-two. We considered asking for more of these funds to be used to offset the increase to taxation. But when we looked at the potential future costs that were, that I'll show in a, in the next slide, we decided not to take that route. So as I said, we'll go over that in another slide. But that was our decision on the fund balance. And then the last two items, the committee fully supported the pre-K expansion, which right now is being funded by a grant, as well as the expansion of the bridge program, which is being paid for by carryover. So what does this mean? With all of this money, we have these potential future costs. So looking at the numbers in FY twenty twenty-four for pre-K, that will leave us with an additional one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five to be covered. They're currently looking for a grant for that. In FY twenty twenty-four, that will leave an additional two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six for the bridge program, they're looking for funding options for that. With, and these, these items were taken directly from the school's presentation, so they, they list the possible use of IDEA funding and additional tuition. In FY twenty twenty-five, all of the ESER funding will be exhausted. That leaves the fifty-two positions that that were covered by ESER. And we talked about that as those being temporary positions, but if we decide to keep any combination of those positions, then that money has to be considered as well. So I did put the total in there, knowing that that total will not be it won't be two million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, that, that is necessary at that time, I just wanted the total out there because based on the combination of that, when it comes to that budget, that will have to be considered. And then the other thing to consider was the the ED two seventy-nine funding, that the teacher to student ratios will are projected to return to normal, as well as the funding for the, for the economically disadvantaged, which would leave an additional four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars that would have to be raised. Now that's not, again, that's future, we don't know exactly what's going to happen with that funding, but that is the projection if the rates went back to normal. So so right now was a a tough year for our schools, coming out of the pandemic. They've been placed under a lot of stress to continue to work to meet the needs of the students and the teachers. We looked at, we, we tried to do our job responsibly and ask for what it would look like if we were to lower the amount needed to be covered by taxation, especially as we had these other funds. And it appeared that there were not as many options for reducing this without reducing positions, which right now we were not willing to consider. So with that said, the budget committee wants to recommend to the city council the following school budget numbers. So for school appropriations, it would be fifty-eight million, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. The school capital reserve of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. We have the school revenue as forty-three million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, with a net to be raised by taxation of fifteen million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, which is an increase of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand and twenty-seven dollars over last year, or four point nine three percent. So in summary, when you combine those together, the combined net to be raised by taxation between the municipal and the school would be thirty-four million, five hundred and ninety thousand, and twenty-two dollars, which would be an increase of the seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-two percent, two hundred and eighty-two dollars, or two point one one percent. The budget committee voted six to one to approve the school and the municipal budget. But we were mindful and wanted to put in the note that we need to keep our eye on the upcoming costs as future budgets are prepared, it's going to depend on revenue, which it always does, right? Whether revenue goes up, whether we get what we're supposed to get. It also depends on the future state funding levels, if things return to normal, as well as incoming revenue for the city. But we definitely want to keep our eyes on that as, as we come to the end of funding for those positions. The other item I wanted to note, I remember when, when I first started on the budget committee years ago, we used to get a lot more public participation. We had very limited public participation this year. We only had a couple of people who who wanted to, to speak out, I, I only received one email myself. And so I just wanted to, you know, kind of summarize the comments that, that we received, and so these comments were from the public, not from the budget committee, but the comments we received were mostly around the use of the ESER funds and the potential costs that, that would have to be covered once the funds were exhausted. And then also we had comment on the maintenance of specific equipment to help gain longer use. I think it would be
Wes, for those comments relating to the school budget, or for, for all the municipal and school?
There were specific vehicles pointed out, I believe a tractor on this, the school side that was mentioned. The ESER funds were talked about, I believe that was also on the city side as well. But most of the specific items were that were talked about were on the school side.
Was there any discussion about the last year's excess funding that the school received and we were able to apply to taxation? Because if you looked at that money, it kind of, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase this year, I'm just saying that last year we used almost a million dollars of school funding money to reduce taxation, so.
We did, and that's where that one point nine percent came, or that one point nine million, which is three percent, came in, we talked about what the carryover would be, they provided us with an update on potential carryover numbers, which was what came out to that one point nine. We were just, and, and that's still possible that you could use some of that, the only concern was what happens if the funding goes down? You know, what happens that year? So that kind of led us to be a little hesitant at pulling the trigger on the one point nine million based on the increasing costs that could be coming.
Thanks Wes, I see the superintendent has his hand up and I'd love to have his comments.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you Wes, yeah, I, I just want to add in, as Mayor Mistracchio was saying, last year through this process, when Governor Mills raised the contribution of education up to fifty-five percent, we did have nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we were able to put last year to tax relief. So that was helpful last year, but as we start our budget process this year, we have that already on the books to try to make up. And so when you look at our increase, actually of under, of over seven hundred thousand dollars, it's actually less when you look at the nine hundred and sixty, that does take into account what our increased costs are, is a lot of that in the school department is being personnel with salary and, and benefits. But at the same time, we also know that we received, when it came to the ESER funds, we really wanted to try to do our best to kind of keep those separate with the idea that those really aren't used for tax relief as we're looking at that. And in this case, we are looking at the carryover. Last year, both the budget committee and the city council was helpful for us to keep that carryover as kind of like a insurance for us in terms of any reduction in revenue or state subsidy. And this year, when it came to our funding, they did keep the student to teacher ratio, once again, at a favorable level for us. They even added it at another layer as well. And that helped us, and the change that they made to the economic disadvantage formula also is very helpful to us, that helped us offset increase in for us when it came to the increased valuation in Sanford, that did hurt us when it came to that. So when it looks to our carryover right now, we are doing our best, we did use more carryover in this budget. We put that towards items, actually one-time items that would be able to help us be able to continue to move the district forward. But we're also trying to hold on to that carryover in the anticipation of, as Wes was talking about, next year, where in the event that that goes back to other, what it was previously, we could then probably expect that to have an impact on our funding and not then wanting to have to do our best to have to rely on the taxpayers for that.
Can I ask a question of both Wes and, and the superintendent, I just want to make it clear for people who are watching us, who maybe didn't watch any of the budget meetings, whether they were school budget meetings or the city budget meetings, that the bridge program will be in the Willard School. The adult ed program will be moved into the Willard School. So I mean, that is all part of this budget, and which I think that a lot of people, when they see activity going on at Willard, I think that they'll be very happy to see that returned or continue to be used as a school. And I know that that was discussed, go ahead Matt, if you have something.
Yeah, that's part of the plan, as we're able to look at a bridge program that meet our needs for the district by expanding that. In order to expand that, we do need more space, going to Willard allows us to keep that for its educational use. At the same time, you also look at that facility, moving the adult ed program over there and keeping it kind of as one campus. When you look at that area to be able to do that, it comes into an economically, it works out from our capacity to be able to come back and do that. We are using some of our carryover funds to assist with that in terms of getting that building ready for those moves to come back that we feel are, are going to help us both in the short term, but also in the long term for the school department.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to that, Wes, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I didn't, just if there were any other questions, I guess I will say though, if, if anybody did not watch the budget meetings, they were fascinating, so I encourage them to go back and, and do so.
Right, everything is available on YouTube, on the WSSR station, correct, and on, probably on the video streaming, so yes, just about anything you can watch if you're really bored one night, right?
That's right.
And any other questions from councillors, can I see, can we stop the screen sharing so I can just see people? Thank you, Jonathan, councillor Martel has a question.
So I had a couple of questions, it looks like that that carryover would just about cover the amount of proposed increase to taxes. I know we did talk about that a little bit, but I have, I have a hard time justifying throwing, you know, over half a million dollars just in reserves that we don't really have allocated. And the other question I had was how many, what was the, the change in students from last year to this year, I know there was some flux because of people homeschooling their kids, et cetera, can you, you speak to that? And how that would have affected your headcount?
Yeah, councillor Martel, thank you, that helps us when it looks at the formula for us, they do an average in the last two years. And you are right, our average was down because of, not this year, but the year previously, when the pandemic was at its height, we did have a number of people who decided to homeschool their students, and by doing that, that impacted our student count. So this year we did come back and go up with that. So we did make an increase in our student count, which then also, when you look at the state subsidy we receive in the formula, that is helpful, as we project next year, we also expect right now that our enrollment to remain steady or slightly increase, we're not anticipating it to go down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by councillors? So my understanding, Steve, is this isn't an action item, the action items are further down, correct, this is just an acceptance of the report?
Correct, and then there's a, a separate, the next item after this is calling out for acceptance, approval, disapproval, or amendments to the municipal budget. Subsequent to that is a call out for the same thing for the school department budget.
Right, so I, we don't need a motion on this one, or do I have to have a motion to accept the, the report?
I think you, I think you can take the report under advisement.
Okay, I will do that then, thank you. Thank you Wes, and thank you to the whole committee for, for the work that you did, we appreciate it. Okay, hang on one second. So twenty-two dash one eight nine dash zero one, ordered to receive and take action on the budget committee's recommendation for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three municipal budget. So I'm just going to say right up front that in the interest of how much time we actually have here, it's seven fifty, and there's a lot that we still have to get through. I had discussed with Steve that there's absolutely no reason that we have to act on this tonight, and we actually discussed the possibility of having a workshop where we could, the, the council could workshop the municipal budget, we do not have to act on this budget this evening. Not going to ask for a motion to table until we can have a discussion on whether or not any, people feel that, what they would like to do and how they'd like to go forward. I personally would like to wait until the legislature is done with their work on April twentieth, and that's their date that they're saying now, just on the off chance, I know there are still some things in play, it probably won't mean anything for income for us, but you never know. So, because there's a lot of money at play right now.
I meant to put, I wanted to put a thing in, the budget needs to be cut, this is ridiculous.
Excuse me, if there's somebody that wants to speak, you'd have to put your hand up, and Bruce one, could you please mute your, thank you. So here's, so I guess I want to know how people would like to proceed this evening with the municipal budget. We will be voting on the school budget, but, because that has to go to referendum, but ours does not. So I just guess I'd like to hear from councillors how you'd like to proceed this evening with this budget. Unless you're ready to pass it as is, with no discussion, because I, but I didn't get that sense.
Can I make a motion for discussion?
Motion for discussion by councillor Hanselman, is there a second?
Second.
That was councillor Brink's second, okay, so discuss. Councillor Martel, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with waiting to discuss the budget until after the things in Augusta wrap up, so we have a better idea of what that looks like.
Thank you, councillor Hanselman.
I love the idea of a, a workshop to dive into the municipal side a little bit further, but my initial question, when I'm looking at the tax impact projections, which I love, is related to the ARPA fund, so we're pulling into this upcoming fiscal year, got ID glasses, one point five million rounding of ARPA funds that we've also, of course, allocated to certain expenditures, including the dispatch and behavioral health, person with the police office, with, sorry, with the PD, but anyway, what I'm wondering is are those expenses, as well as that income reflected in our municipal revenue and then our municipal appropriations, Steve, or are they kind of netted within the worksheet so that they're, they're not affecting the net to taxation, does that question make sense?
It does, so so I've been pulling information while, while, while we're waiting to, to get to this point. This sheet is the council's approved use of ARPA funds, as, as they stand currently. These are incorporated pursuant to that directive in the municipal budget and was supported These are incorporated pursuant to that directive in the municipal budget and was supported overall by the Budget Committee. So there's two ways that I can present this. The first is budget, so when you, when we look at the use of the ARPA funds here in this first year, you can see that 65.36% of the $2.2 million is allocated for the fiscal '22-'23. The remainder of that goes over two more fiscal years. In there, there is $95,167 that's reflected within the capital program towards the [inaudible]. improvement, so $95,167, so that reduced our CIP. There is the reduction of training cost of $45,180, well, excuse me. The training costs are left in the budget for the, this is for the dispatch center. That training cost is still in there, but the revenue was put in to offset that. So a reduced taxation of the $45,180, that's on the training within the dispatch center for non-certified dispatchers. There was a $10,000 offset to train somebody that's already a certified dispatcher coming to the center in the next year, but they still need to become oriented to the new region, the frequencies, and the departments that they're dispatching for. So again, that expense is in the SRCC, but the offsetting revenue is in here by the use of the ARPA funds. Then there is for one paramedic training in the fire department. That expenditure is in the fire department's operational budget, but there's $50,167 on the revenue side that is offsetting that from that taxation. And then in the police department, we have the training cost of one non-blue pin officer for the ensuing year. Those costs are in the police department's budget, but we have the offsetting revenue of $40,800. So those offsetting revenues reduce this year's tax commitment by $241,314. Also, you have in there the position for the clinical social worker to round out the mental health division that we're forming within the police department. There's an expense of $110,000 for the position, and then there's a revenue for $110,000 by the use of the ARPA fund. So that's, that's, that's a no net. It doesn't change tax, it doesn't reduce taxation, does not increase taxation. Same thing is true for the restoration of the '21 and '22, the '22 positions from the dispatch center. There's a call out of expense in the SRCC of $179,630, and then the associated revenue for the use of the ARPA funds of $179,630 is in your revenue side of the budget as well. So the $289,000, $289,630 worth of expenses and revenues that are zeroed out by the use of the ARPA funds. So in this year's operational budget between expenses and revenues, there's $530,944 use of ARPA funds to the benefit of either offsetting operations and/or services that were to be performed anyways, or offsetting increased in enhancement of services, i.e. the mental health officer as well as the two dispatch positions. Does that answer the question?
It does. And what I was trying to get to, Steve, which I, you answered the question, is when I look at the increase to municipal appropriation at 1.6 million roughly, if I'm thinking about it from the standpoint of pulling the ARPA funds out and looking at non-ARPA-related increases, that would reduce it to about a million dollars based on what you're seeing, roughly. I think we're on the same page.
Okay. So can I, yeah, can I just say that I think what we probably need to do is have a more in-depth discussion? So I don't know how, I haven't heard from other people, but, I mean, it doesn't have to be a long workshop, but we have time to do that, and we, and we don't have to act on this budget. If we act on it in May, it'd still be fine. So the way that I look at it is that I want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with whatever it is that we do vote on, and I know that there are items that, for some people, they probably want to discuss in more depth. So, and I'm pretty sure the city manager is okay with that, because, so how does the rest of the council feel about that before I ask for a motion to table? I don't, because once we have a motion on the floor to table, there will be no more discussion about this, so.
This is just the municipal budget?
Just the municipal. We're going to act on the school budget this evening because we have to.
I'm okay with.
Councilor Stackpole has his hand up. Go ahead, Bob.
I was giving you a thumbs up.
Oh, okay.
So I'm okay with what you're saying.
Okay. Does anyone else? Okay, Becky as well. I see Ann. I know you like workshop in this. Give everybody a chance to ask all their questions. Okay, so I guess I will ask for a motion to table this item.
I'll move to table the municipal budget vote this evening.
Motion to table by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brink. I'll call the roll. Councilor Brink?
Yes.
Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Okay, that item is tabled. Okay, 22-192-01, order to receive and take action on the Budget Committee's recommendation for the fiscal year '22-'23 school budget. I'm going to just ask for a motion to approve, and then we can have discussion after I have a motion in a second.
Move with proof.
Motion by Councilor Stackpole to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brink. We have a motion and a second discussion by the council. I don't, oh, Councilor Hanselman, go ahead.
Didn't think that you were going to get away with it that easy.
Yeah, I was going to cry.
Oh, my, my questions are around the fund balance, and I recognize all the work that's been put into this, but my concern is that that fund balance is increasing year over year. Some of it is related to the fact that we had closures during COVID where our buildings were literally shut down. And I, I appreciate, both as a parent and as a city council, that we still provided educational services to our kids, but there were some cost savings there. And I just feel like we, we have some cost savings, and it's just never going back to our community members. And so I'm really struggling with the growing fund balance. At the same time, I recognize that, you know, we have potentially scary futures ahead of us, and we need to be thinking about that, too. So one of my questions, and I don't, I'm hoping just to get some insight on this, is what our anticipated fund balance for this current year is, meaning what the change will be for the current fiscal year. And I did try to find that on the school website, but the financial data is a little bit, I think it was only through Jan, December 31st available. So I don't know if anybody can answer that on the fly?
Yeah, I'll try.
Sue, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I'll try, and then our business manager, Cheryl Fornier, can maybe correct me or back me up. But that's something, Councilor Hanselman, that we're paying attention to as well, right? If, where we're doing our best to see where our financials are now and where our projections are for the, to the remainder of the year. And there have been some increased costs to us that have gone on into this budget. And so we feel comfortable with where we are in the budget, but we're not anticipating much of a carryover, if any, with that. I want to point out once again, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, I apologize, but Councilor Hanselman, before you became on the council, we were in the school department using carryover to help balance budgets and to help us with that. And we ran into a couple of years there where we did not meet those carryover projections, and that created a deficit for us. And so that's something, as I go about with that, sustainability is important to us. When we do put a budget together, we do not put a budget together that's going to have a built-in carryover or savings in there, because we want to be rarely responsible to taxpayers. You are correct that our fund balance has increased, and that has done that mainly, as you pointed out, through COVID, when we, in two years ago, when we shut down our schools in March. And then as we've gone through that, both that year and this, the previous year, we are coming back to do our best to capture savings when money doesn't have to be spent. But as we look at the current budget that we are in, we're not expecting a carryover. We're expecting to come right at projections. Cheryl, do I have that accurate?
Yes, you do.
Any other questions? Or comments? I don't see any hands up, so I guess we have a motion on the floor and a second. I will call the roll then. Councilor Brink?
Yes.
Councilor Martel?
No.
Councilor Hanselman?
No.
Did you say no?
Said no.
Okay. Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No.
You voted no?
Mm-hmm. I think there's.
And I'm also a yes, so that, pardon me?
I think there's more that can be done with fund balance. I'm sorry. I just, I just feel like.
So we have a three to three vote, so that is no action on this. We have to do this, we have to figure this out because this needs to go to the ballot. What's the last date that we can act on this one, Steve?
I believe it was tonight's meeting.
Well, I think we got to, we're going to have to hash this one out then, because I'm not going to, I mean, I, I think that, I guess I just don't understand, because I think that the Budget Committee looked at this budget, and I really am surprised that we're, we're going to not send this to the ballot, because at least this one can go to the ballot, let the public decide if.
So.
I mean, I, I accept their explanation, sorry, but I do.
I know, I just.
Can we ask the city clerk the last date? She, she's here with us this evening. If we can ask her the last date.
What's the last date, Sue, that we can act on this budget? I can't hear you.
What I need for you to do this evening is to sign the warrant calling for the election.
Okay.
That has a 60-day deadline before the election day to be done. The figures of what the budget is does not go on the ballot.
Okay.
I get those figures after, from the school committee and the superintendent, and those items are posted at the polling places on election day. And I usually do have them available when I start issuing absentee ballots as well.
Okay. So could we, so we can act on that warrant, we can table this item, though, and then we could probably put it on the workshop that we do with the, the municipal budget then?
If you so choose.
And that wouldn't affect anything about the election or the referendum, correct?
It will not on my end. I don't know how that works for Superintendent Nelson.
Well, Matt, can you weigh in?
Have any effect?
What's the?
For the cost center numbers?
What am I weighing in for?
I just want to make sure that as long, if we table the, the school budget this evening, but we, we sign the warrant, it doesn't change anything. We'll be acting on this, well, we'll have to have a workshop and, and then a vote on it at a regular meeting, so within the month, so you'd have the figures. As long as we vote to put on the warrant, there's nothing that would preclude us from doing that, correct?
I don't think so. I'm, I'm just concerned about the timing of that when it comes to us in terms of getting our business ready for next year, in terms of any posting of positions and hiring and things that we have to do with people who are retiring and filling those positions. That's something we typically use this timeline to try to get that out prior to the.
I agree.
April school vacation. And then you also start looking at if we are going to be moving over to Willard School, the, the process of coming back to be able to get that ready for it. So from that standpoint, I am concerned. I, I think we'd be able to meet Sue's legal, I guess, piece of doing that, but from a school, school department perspective, that would be difficult. I'm not trying to extend this evening's meeting, but if people are concerned about the carryover amount, and they have some recommendations and ideas about that, I'm all ears now. And then if that, the council wants to take, once again, take action on that, we would be able to go forward, save us some time, and maybe help the timeline down the line. That's just my thoughts.
Well, I guess I can ask for a, is there someone who wants to make a motion to reduce that or to utilize how much of, of carryover? I mean, I guess I don't see the, I totally don't agree with that, but at some point we have to move.
Madam Mayor.
Steve, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I do not, I do not on this, this point. This is, this is, Budget Committee's made their recommendation.
Right.
Both this, and I have presented our recommended budgets, and they're reflective of our respective legislative bodies that have given us directives on the development of each of those. It's been reviewed by the Budget Committee, and it's before the City Council tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Martel, go ahead. You have your hand up.
Counselor Stackpole is trying to speak. I'll let him go first.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Stackpole. You were on the Budget Committee, so I'd love to hear your comment.
Well, all I was, I was going to add is more of a procedural question, and I did vote affirmatively for the motion that's tied. Is it appropriate for me to make a motion to reconsider?
There was no motion that, that passed. A three to three vote is a no, is not, is not a vote. There is no action. So anybody is free to make a motion.
Okay. I, I would, I would move we reconsider the school budget as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And a second by Councilor Brink. Discussion. Councilor Martel?
I guess for the matter at hand, I think that just puts us back where we were unless somebody's changed their mind.
Well, the motion is to reconsider it, and you can amend that motion, but go ahead, Councilor Hanselman.
Oh, thank you. Can somebody, and Matt probably can remind me what the typical, and I understand that DOE has adjusted it due to COVID and in recognition of the last couple of years, but what is the normal percentage that we're allowed for fund balance? Because there is a limitation typically, is my understanding?
Yes, as we work with our auditors, that is usually 3%. Through COVID, they have extended that to be over that. We have, we have a carryover now that comes out. I think, Cheryl, it's about 4.1%.
4.7.
And then, and then what we're planning to do is, as we look ahead next year, when you look at those changes for the student to teacher ratios, the changes in economically disadvantaged, and what we expect our evaluation to go up, that comes out to right around 1.9, which we're a carryover sitting now. And that's not an accident. That is strategy by us to come back to be able to look at that. Now, once again, things could change next year. I know we're working hard to put pressure on our elected officials to look at the valuation impact that's going to happen to pretty much all of Southern Maine with all of what happened in terms of the real estate increase through COVID. But if everything was to revert and stay the same, we would be sitting at a situation where we would be looking at decreasing in funding. And if that's the case, we'd want to be able to protect our positions and use the carryover in that situation. If there are some people that still feel that's too high in the amount, would like to go towards that, then I'm also open to hearing what people's suggestions would be for that.
May I have a follow-up?
Oh. Go ahead.
Thank you. And then I'll let others speak. But so, just if I'm understanding correctly, are you saying that the currently projected 1.9 fund balance would be used in full in the next fiscal year if your projections hold true to bring us to zero at that point?
Pretty much, yes. That's what our projections, if we've come back and looking at the formula as is, if that's going to come back and change, then we would expect not to be a winner when it comes to the state subsidy formula. That would be something where we would now not see that in our favor this year, that would revert back next year, and then that would create a pretty hold that, as Wes mentioned earlier, in order for us to be able to bring this down, that means the loss of positions.
And I'm sorry, my last one, and is my understanding correct, that the reserve balance, which is currently about 1.1 million, you're proposing using 254,000 of that, I believe, in this coming fiscal year? So we still have 830,000 in reserve balance in addition to the fund balance, correct? Am I following that correctly?
Cheryl, do you want to give those figures in terms of what we have for reserve accounts? And then I can speak to how we anticipate using those.
Yeah, so we have about a million, just under a million dollars in reserve.
Yeah, so we have about a million, just under a million dollars in reserve accounts. We're gonna use 254,000 of that. So that's gonna leave us at just over, just right around 700,000 after we do that. We're at three, 4.7% of unassigned fund balance, which is the two point, just under 2.6 million dollars. We're going to use up 661,000 of that in this budget to bring us down to a 3%. And that 3% is right, almost the exact same number as those three items that Matt just discussed, which is economically disadvantaged, which was a funding change, the ratio change for student to teacher ratio and the valuation change. So that's, as Matt said, was strategic to leave that 3%.
Cheryl, we're looking for the reserve accounts when it comes to, I think, Counselor Hanselman, if I have this right, you're looking at our special education, our fuel and capital improvements.
Yep. Yep, that was the million dollars at the beginning and we're using 254,000 of it.
So can you list for Counselor Hanselman where that leaves us in those particular accounts?
Yep. So the capital improvement, which is, I believe, due to the, our charter also, that we have to put that aside if we didn't use it for 121,000. Health insurance is at 422,000 and strategically, we're leaving it there for, because we've had two great years, that's not gonna continue and we're worried that we'll have a double-digit increase that we can use that money towards. And then fuel reserves for 80,000 and then...
And so as Cheryl's talking about with that, we've had health insurance decreases, which has been very helpful because that's been something that's really been a beast to us in the past, but a lot of that is during COVID, people weren't allowed to be able to come back and have some of their elective surgeries and whatnot. So we are holding that back to protect against what we would anticipate would be increases coming down the line. We all know what the increases in fuel are currently doing. We also see that happening to be able to protect with that. And then with special education, there have been some changes in terms of how that, how our outside placements are being, how we're being billed in that. It used to be something we were billed when our students attended. Now we're being billed whether or not the students attend or not. And so that's something that we are concerned about, that we may have to tap into those reserves to make sure we balance this year's budget when it comes to special education and our outside placements for that.
Okay, Counselor Stackpole has his hand up and then Counselor Brink.
Right, yeah. First of all, I think we need to, we need to recognize that we're in extraordinary times financially, both on the municipal side and the school side in terms of grants that are available and programs that can be enhanced and so on. Quickly though, my point being that, you know, last year, the schools, I believe it was 975,000 in that ballpark, helped us to lower the tax rate. This year, you just have to think of that as a revenue cut. This year, they had to make up the 975,000. And the same thing, if we, you know, money's, we're reducing revenues essentially for the schools. We're creating a hole in the future that the school's gonna have to make up somewhere. I think the superintendent and business managers, great answers here that they're just going through, demonstrate as they did with the Budget Committee, that they've thought about these things and they've planned these things out. They've also thought about the positions that are being funded for two to three years and we had a discussion, worst-case scenario, people will lose their jobs. Best-case scenario, is we get two to three years of helping kids in the Sanford schools to catch up or whatever needs to be done because of the COVID situation. So we have had very thorough discussions about this and we decided not to tip in to the money that we're discussing here. My main point is, you take 500,000 of that money away, next year the schools have to make up that 500,000. It's like a revenue cut. So, and I'm sure, I had a discussion and I applaud Counselor Hanselman and her, all those things. Again, great answers from the school side and, you know, and so on, but we'll move on.
Counselor Brink?
I would have to also comment on what Bob just commented on, that student social emotional needs are huge. It's something that we've never faced before. And I think next year, if we had some funds that we could possibly do something more with the social emotional needs, would be fantastic. I think this year, in our schools, we had just saw the tip of the iceberg for what students are going through. We've heard a tremendous amount of things on the news now about the social emotional needs of parents and then of our teenagers at the high school. And I've seen this happen because we're involved in the health system. We've seen a number of suicides, you know, that have taken place amongst our youth. And now they're finding it's going down to the junior high. These things are happening. So I think next year, we're gonna be faced with an awful lot of decisions that is gonna be, impact the school system. Also, as a past administrator, if the budget doesn't get passed tonight, I know right now, I would already have several staff members who are gonna retire or finally leave, that I would have to advertise for those staff positions. If you don't advertise immediately, you are not gonna get the cream of the crop. And I've seen that happen year after year where you're just finally stuck with whoever you can get, which Sanford deserves better than that. We have a phenomenal school system. Every building, you can take pride in. We've done, you as a city council have been a part of that, putting enough money in the budget so that they could redo all the schools. We are getting businesses coming into our community because of what our school system looks like. Let's take pride in what we have done. Keep going. Give us another couple of years with what we need to finish out here. Don't take the money back at this point. This is not the time to decide to take money away. This is the time to leave it as is. Thank you.
Counselor Martel has his hand up.
Yeah, I know there's been a bit of back and forth. I just had a procedural question. If I made a motion to table this and move this to a workshop discussion, would that be out of order or do we need to finish?
If you make a motion to table, there's no discussion unless you don't get a second. And I would hope we didn't get a second because I don't think we're ready to table it yet. But that's up to you if you're gonna make that motion. There is no discussion about a tabling motion.
I would like to make a motion to table this and move this to a workshop session discussion for a later vote.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. Discussion will continue. Motion on the table is to reconsider the budget. So I see that Deputy Mayor Hurley has her hand up. Go ahead.
My biggest concern with both budgets has been that we're getting all this money this year. We're adding all this stuff in. I can understand what the school is trying to do, but taking that money to fix a problem next year, that problem continues forever. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find that money somewhere, whether we take it, you know, I can see you're gonna fix a one-year problem. So in two years, there's a massive increase. You know this, Matt. And that's my biggest concern, is that what are we gonna do in two years? You've solved one year. What are we gonna do in two years? There's going to be a massive increase in our budget. And so you add, everybody's adding positions, everybody's grabbing all the money this year. There is a reckoning to come. And I really think we should be rethinking how much we're using this money to grow. I mean, I kinda wish in the budgets I saw some things that weren't repetitive. We were taking care of problems that were one-time problems, more capital improvements and stuff like that, rather than adding positions. These are my big issues with this budget this year, is we threw a lot in that is gonna come, there is a reckoning coming. And yeah, I, you know, I could probably, I hate doing, I could probably...
Can I, I understand.
But I think there's, I think people need to recognize what's about to happen two years from now, so.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something. Those kids are gonna be there this year and next year and we'll either do what we have to do for them or we don't, but those kids are the kids that are gonna suffer from it. So I feel very strongly that the programming that they have should be supported and that's why I'm supporting this budget. It isn't about doing one, you don't do, they're not asking to do one-time things. They're asking to do something for kids right now. So go ahead, Counselor Brink.
We did discuss that at the budget level. And if you remember, and Bob, you can add to this too, that in the past, we used to have grants that came in at, some of them were 7 million dollars, where we had a ton of social workers in our school system, knowing, and extra teachers, knowing that at some point, those grants would no longer be there. And people were hired under that understanding. And low and behold, it did happen that we did not get those grants again. And we did let staff go, but we were ready for it. I, as an administrator, would have planned way ahead, knowing what was gonna happen. And we had a whole bunch of stuff, other things in place that we could put in. It wasn't as good, but let me tell you, during the few years that we had those grants, it really helped a tremendous amount of kids. And I think anytime that we can help kids and help them get through a bad situation, let's do it. And then in a year when we don't have that money, then you cut back. But at least give us a chance to help the kids that we can help now.
Uh, Counselor Hanselman?
I just want to be really clear that personally, I support the school budget in the sense that I would be happy to have it increased to my property tax card and what I pay. But as an elected official that works with our community members and our neighbors and our citizens and pays attention to the conversations that are happening, there's a lot of bad feelings about Sanford's constant increase to net to taxes, or to the taxes, let's just call it that, right? The increase to taxes. And we've promised things along the time, along the way. So we did our school project. We promised that the cost savings of that building were significant. Utilities were going down. We're gonna save all kinds of money. I said those words to people as I was supporting our school, high school building project. And I wouldn't change that in terms of my support for that program, but we're not seeing that come to fruition. The school bond, I mean, excuse me, the road bond work that we did, we again promised that we see, in the solar projects, we're seeing more revenue. We're gonna reduce net taxation and we're just not seeing it. So it feels frustrating to me as a city councillor, not as an individual taxpayer, not as somebody who loves our schools and loves our community, but as a city councillor, it feels frustrating to me that I feel like we're not giving back to our community any of the additional revenue that we see. So I'm just trying to find that balance. I don't know if it's worth conversation about the number to try to move this forward or if anybody was willing to talk about that, but, you know, somewhere in my mind, 250,000 to 500,000 in the fund balance would just be something to give back to the net taxation. That's kind of the number in my mind, but I don't know how other people feel about it.
Counselor Hanselman?
I just want to be really clear that personally, I support the school budget in the sense that I would be happy to have it increased to my property tax card and what I pay. But as an elected official that works with our community members and our neighbors and our citizens and pays attention to the conversations that are happening, there's a lot of bad feelings about Sanford's constant increase to net to taxing, or to the taxes, let's just call it that, right? The increase to taxes. And we've promised things along the time, along the way. So we did our school project. We promised that the cost savings of that building were significant. Utilities were going down. We're gonna save all kinds of money. I said those words to people as I was supporting our school, high school building project. And I wouldn't change that in terms of my support for that program, but we're not seeing that come to fruition. The school bond, I mean, excuse me, the road bond work that we did, we again promised that we see, in the solar projects, we're seeing more revenue. We're gonna reduce net taxation and we're just not seeing it. So it feels frustrating to me as a city councillor, not as an individual taxpayer, not as somebody who loves our schools and loves our community, but as a city councillor, it feels frustrating to me that I feel like we're not giving back to our community any of the additional revenue that we see. So I'm just trying to find that balance. I don't know if it's worth conversation about the number to try to move this forward or if anybody was willing to talk about that, but, you know, somewhere in my mind, 250,000 to 500,000 in the fund balance would just be something to give back to the net taxation. That's kind of the number in my mind, but I don't know how other people feel about it.
So you're, can I just clarify what you just said? So if they were to contribute 250,000 from the fund balance?
I'm just looking for some use of the fund balance that's above what's currently happening. And so if I look at the increase to their appropriation at just under 5%, you know, if we did 500,000 and we get that to the 4% mark, which is kind of a basis around which we've been forming some of our assumptions over time, but I'm not sure we even have to go that far. I'm just looking for something. But I'm curious what the other councillors think.
Well, I guess before I ask what the other councillors would think, I would like to know what that would look like in terms of how it would impact the school budget right now. And that would just affect the money going forward that they would be looking at trying to manage potential decreases in the next fiscal year from the state. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, I think that that is correct. Getting back to what Deputy Mayor Hurley was saying, is that is, in essence, moving that forward instead of us being prepared for it because she's correct. And looking down the line two years, in terms of if we were gonna have to use that carryover next year to address any revenue shortfalls, any subsidy shortfalls, that would come due the following year. She is correct with that, but that's gonna be on us to have to come back and do what we can to make our plans to minimize that impact the best that we can. Now, if you do it, it would just be taking, we don't have a lot of new stuff or new positions in this budget to be able to come from. It would be my recommendation to look at the carryover and that would just be something that would help us in the short term, but it would also be kicking the problem down the road as well.
And can I just say, Matt, that one of my concerns is that I would hope, I really support that pre-K program and the bridge program. And what I don't want to see happen is because the council is saying we would like you to take it from fund balance, but the truth is, the school, if we cut that by 250,000, the school committee can decide what they want to do, correct?
Yes, they can. And we have not had those discussions. I would say that both through the Budget Committee and through the school committee, that people are committed to expanding the bridge and also with our pre-K program, taking advantage of our grant, expanding that. So that's financially in our interest this year, as was pointed out by Wes. Next year, if that pre-K grant goes away, we would be looking at about 180,000. That would be an increase to the budget. Now, we're also looking at that and not taking that lightly. There may be other funding sources or other grants. There's a big push to continue expanding pre-K. We would be able to take advantage of any of those opportunities if we qualify. And we'd also maybe have to do some restructuring on our end at that time as far as where our priorities are when you bring pre-K onto the school system. So yes, I would see that if there was gonna be a change to that, I am confident that that would not fall under pre-K or the expansion of the bridge program.
Because I would, I'll just be right up front. I would support 250,000 from the fund balance of the school, but that is probably, and in the interest of moving this budget along this evening. Wouldn't make me really happy, but I would, I would support that. Counselor Martel and then Counselor Stackpole.
So I just had a clarifying question around what was just stated. Say, for example, we cut the use of reserves, which is 600 some odd thousand. That gets treated, that cut would just get shuffled around. So you basically get one big bucket and you would redo your other budget items around that? Is that what you're stating?
Use of reserves...
The school committee decides how much money they, when we decide, when they, when the city decides how much money the school will spend, they, as a school committee, have the right to spend it how they, in the best interest of kids. That's their job.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yeah, and that was gonna be my exact point. What we're gonna vote on is the bottom line. So they get their annual bucket and the school committee decides, along with input from the superintendent, of course, how they spend that money. So I don't believe, and Matt, you can chime in on this, we can say we're gonna take 250,000 from, I think that's beyond the scope of what the city council do.
And just to clarify, I shouldn't have said specifically to the fund balance, but that's the number I'm looking at. My thinking from watching all of the school budget committees since the beginning of January is that they would do it from fund balance, but I won't make that assumption.
Well, waiting for a motion. I'm not making it.
There is Bob on...
The motion was to reconsider, but is there an amendment to that motion?
I'd like to amend to the budget so that there's zero additional taxation for the budget.
Is there a second to that motion? That motion dies by lack of a second. Okay, the motion on the table is to reconsider the school budget, as is or as amended. Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the school budget by reducing their total appropriation by 250,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion by Counselor Hanselman, second by... Motion by Council Hanselman, second by Deputy Mayor Hurley, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Council Brink?
No.
Council Martel?
No.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
No.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a no. So, that motion dies. That was a three to three, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I move, move the original motion, um, move the question.
Okay, we'll try again. So, the motion is to pass it as, as, as it is. Any more, do, do I have a motion, uh, you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There was, there was a se-
There was a second? Who, who made that second? Deputy, Council Brink, okay, we have a motion and a second. Try voting again, Council Brink?
Yes.
Council Martel?
No.
Council Hanselman?
No.
Um, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Motion passes.
Don't expect this on the municipal side, I'm, like, some, something's gonna give.
All right, let's just go on, because, uh, it's gonna be a late night. Okay, hang on, I gotta find out where we are, okay. Twenty-two dash one-nine-three dash zero-one, shall the city authorize the treasurer and the mayor to issue general obligation securities of the city of Sanford, including temporary notes and anticipation of sale thereof, in an aggregate maximum principal amount of one million dollars, for the purpose of a required match leverage for a five-million-dollar EPA Brownfields cleanup grant, to continue to support redevelopment activities in the mill yard, primarily the sites at the International Woolen Property, including demolition of the boilerhouse stack and construction of the new surface parking to meet the needs in the mill yard, and other costs related thereto, specific projects to be selected according to priorities set by the city manager, subject to final determination by the city council, and delegate to the treasurer and the mayor, the discretion to fix, fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, places of payment, premium form, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the city of Sanford, to provide for the sale thereof, and to expend bond proceeds on the project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Council Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brink. Um, who's gonna do this, Steve?
I'll start with the presentation, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Planning Director Beth Delavalle, who's been working in this realm. This was reviewed as part of the Budget Committee process, because pursuant to the city charter, any bonding that's going forward, if it's, even if it's within the council's authorization or subject to voter referendum, uh, is to be reviewed by, and re- a recommendation made by, uh, the Budget Committee. Budget Committee reviewed this element, and they made a recommendation to support, so I bring forward that support to recommend it here this evening. Uh, this is a proposal that it would go, if, if approved by the council, to move this forward, we started, I worked with bond council, we would prepare this for the November two-thousand-and-twenty-two referendum vote, for the citizens of, uh, Sanford to vote on this. Uh, it is a one-million-dollar, uh, ten-year loan, uh, for which this year, we would have ninety-six-hundred dollars that would, uh, be in the budget to pay the first-year interest on this, if approved by the voters. It allows us to leverage, uh, EPA Brownfields funds that is coming, will be coming to, is anticipated to come to, the, uh, Regional Planning Commission, for which a portion of that will be allocated towards the purpose, as expressed here in, in the program, in the language here this evening. Uh, if, if there's, uh, a portion of that one million dollars that's borrowed that is less than the match that's, that's needed, uh, then we would use that for leverage fund to further attract and perfect cleanup and remediation in the mill yard. Uh, Director Delavalle, do you have further explanation beyond that?
Uh, I guess the only thing that I would do is describe, uh, what we were be proposing to focus on in the mill yard, um, uh, the city has had a very successful Brownfields, uh, program since the inception, inception of the program at the beginning of, uh, the two thousands, um, uh, when we received our eight-hundred-thousand-dollar multipurpose grant, one of only thirteen, that were awarded across the country. Um, at that point in time, Sanford, um, had received the highest amount of funds of any municipality in the state. Um, so, this initiative is building off of that success and, uh, the intention to take it forward. The next, uh, highest priority for us is dealing with the, um, the boilerhouse, as you'll remember, a few, um, months back, you, uh, identified that property as a vacant dangerous building, it is, um, in very bad shape. Um, uh, it's a tricky project to deal with the demolition, uh, because the back wall of that boilerhouse actually is part of the retaining wall that is holding up Pioneer Ave, and so we've gotta be very cautious about how we, um, manage that demolition. The demolition would also include taking down the last, uh, smokestack on the, uh, in the mill yard. Um, when both of those things were accomplished, um, we can remediate the site for the hazardous material that is largely in the ground, as well as, you know, when we, when we demolish the, uh, the boilerhouse and take it off, we'll get rid of the hazardous material, building materials, um, excuse me, um, and, uh, what we will end up doing is capping, um, the contaminated material that's left on the site, um, and then we would create a surface parking lot, which would create about a hundred-and-twenty-seven new parking spaces, desperately needed in the mill yard, both for the existing, um, uh, use by Sanford Mill. Um, currently, they are occupying, uh, the lower level of the Midtown Mall, um, parking that's, um, also really strongly needed for redevelopment in the downtown area, so you can see that it builds on itself. Um, in addition, by making these investments, um, in the mill yard, uh, we're going to specifically be responding to, uh, mill redevelopers who have, uh, unsolicited over the last couple of years, been expressing concern that they need to see the city make a, a financial commitment to improve the aesthetics and the functioning of the mill yard, uh, in order to motivate them to invest their private money.
Thank you, Beth.
I guess, thank you.
Any other discussion by the council, any comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the table, this is just, um, to send it to the voters in November. So, I will call the roll.
Is it November or June?
No, it would go in November.
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 Yes. Council Brink?
Yes.
Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
No.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, you are muted.
Oh, I said, um, yes.
Okay, and I'm also a yes, that is, um, five in favor and one opposed. Am I correct? Did I get that? Okay, motion passes. Twenty-seven dash one-nine-four dash zero-one, shall the city authorize the treasurer and the mayor to issue general obligation securities of the city of Sanford, including temporary notes and inten- in anticipation of the sale thereof, in an aggregate maximum principal amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, for the purpose of completing the Phase Two Presidential Lane Airport Project, including all utilities, pavement of the road, and to complete the major drainage, infrastructure, and other costs related thereto, specific projects to be selected, according to priorities set by the city manager, subject to final determination by the city council, and delegate to the treasurer and the mayor, the discretion to fix the, fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, places of payment, premium form, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the city of Sanford, to provide for the sale thereof, and to expend bond proceeds on the, on the project. We've had, discussed this numerous times, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Council Stackpole, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Hanselman. Um, Steve, are you gonna, is, uh, do we need a further explanation from, um, Allison, or?
I, I can cover this bri- uh, quickly, uh, this is Phase Two of the Presidential Lane Extension, Phase One was identical to this, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond over five years, that was approved last year. The two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is within the city council's bonding capacity, so it does not need to go out to voter referendum, so if you are supportive of this tonight, it moves us into the second phase of the extension of Presidential Lane, for which we already have inquiries for, uh, building, uh, additional hangers on that extended, extended, uh, portion. Um, the bond council, uh, thi- this is a simple flip, everything has been prepared, uh, it's simply changed the name to Phase Two on this, and it would be ready to go, uh, and it would, and if, if approved, it'll go into the budget, there's sixteen-hundred dollars in there for first-year interest only, and then it would be, uh, approximately, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, for each subsequent year, for the next five years thereafter, to pay that off. Uh, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond is the se- is, is necessary to match the cash flow capabilities of the rate of growth, as well as the tax increment financing district, the omnibus district that it sits in, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars covers that shortfall, as the developers pay forty-seven thousand dollars per unit to make the connections, uh, for this newly expanded, uh, Presidential Way.
Okay, any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Council Brink?
Yes.
Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash one-five-one dash zero-one, order to approve a proposed amendment of Chapter one-twenty fees, Chapter one-forty-nine licensing, Chapter one-sixty-one marijuana, and Chapter two-eighty zoning, this item must be read on two occasions, this is the first reading. We did have, uh, lots of discussion about this the last time, um, had two public hearings about it, and this is just the first reading. Is there any questions, anything, anybody needs for information for the next meeting, when we finally will vote on this, or are we, is it sufficient? Council Hanselman?
The only clarification I wanted is, um, I wasn't finding in the amended ordinances the specification of only one license per property, and I just wanna really make sure that was discussed, and we were in agreement that was the intent, but I, I wasn't finding it in my reading of the ordinances.
I'm gonna agree with, uh, Council Hanselman on that one, I think, um, legally, I'm not sure we wrote it appropriately, and I think it, it lacks clear, it lacks strong clarity on that one issue. I think the word A-
Are there any others?
So.
Any other things that you need, um, staff to look into, or questions that you will need to be answered to be able to vote on this at the next regular meeting? Okay, then I think we're all set. Twenty-two dash two-nine-zero-nine dash zero-one, order to discuss the process for putting forward a delegate at the York County Budget Committee caucuses on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to be seated on the committee and represent Sanford. Um, okay, Steve, do you wanna just introduce this?
I'll take this, so the, uh, the caucus process is in your packet, uh, that is sent to us by County Commissioner, uh, County Administrator Greg Zinser. Um, it calls out for currently, uh, Sanford, the district that we sit in, District Four, we have Alfred Dayton, Limerick, Lyman, Sanford and Waterboro, all three positions in there are vacant, it calls for two of those three positions to be, um, called out pursuant to the caucus, and they must be elected officials, and one person can be from the public, and we've asked for clarification, and we, we found that, that if, if, for example, if you have an elected person from Sanford, then the public person cannot be from Sanford. So, each of these three, uh, positions for our district have to be from different municipalities. So, in order to, if you wanna support somebody for, uh, Sanford, um, resident and/or elected official, you need to send, uh, one or more delegates to the caucus to, uh, put forward that, that name or names, and have those so supported.
And that meeting is, um, on Wednesday? Bill, is it the twelve?
April thirteenth, six-thirty P.M. At York County Courthouse.
At six-thirty.
And I, and I know for years, uh, for the years that, um, Joseph Hanslip served as city councillor, he was, he was annually, uh, appointed to and served for quite a number of years on the York County Budget Committee.
So, do we need, we don't have any, oh, go ahead, Council Martel.
Um, just, just for information, um, what, what kinds of things is that Budget Committee covering? Can you?
York County Budget.
Yeah, so not dissimilar from the city's process, the, um, administrative team at the York County will present to the Budget Committee, Budget Committee will, will take that, uh, budget, uh, presentation under advisement, they'll go through the, the detail, discuss, uh, and make recommendations, uh, via that, that process, and at the end of, end of that process, uh, the county commissioners will be asked to adopt the, the budget as, as recommended to them, or with or without amendments, and then ultimately, that will set the, uh, county tax commitment, and then we, as a city, receive a bill, which we are obliged to pay.
Okay, thank you.
And have we had anybody that's shown interest in serving in this capacity?
Uh, not that, not that we've been made aware of here at the city office.
Okay, so it's behooves us to have a discussion and try to put somebody forward, um, at next Wednes- at, um, it would be next Wednesday, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, um, I don't think we, uh, I think that's something for us to do outside of this meeting, because, um, we're not gonna just nominate somebody who doesn't wanna do it, so. I think there's at least one person that I've heard that might be interested, so I guess we'll have to explore that, and it means we have to show up at the caucus so that we can vote for that person. Council Martel?
I, I might be interested, I'll have to look at, into the time commitment on that.
Okay, well, we'll see, there'll be a, I mean, I don't know if anybody else, it depends how many people show up, so if you intend to, um, be the nom- be one, at least one of the nominees, then, um, we would see you at that meeting then. Okay, so there's no action then on that item, right, Steve?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on. To twenty-two dash one-nine-nine dash zero-one, order to discuss procedure and timeline for filling vacant city council seat, and I'm gonna start this one because, um, in this, in reviewing the charter, and having participated in at least three different occasions in my previous life as a town councillor, when we had openings, we never even discussed, um, whether or not we could have a special election. Um, the charter was pretty clear that it said we, we could appoint someone, we may appoint, I know that that, and that's how we always approached it in the past. Um, when I realized that, after reading it, that it didn't prohibit a special election, and that we were close enough to the June election, I asked the city manager to look into whether we had sufficient time, including being able to get this person, or getting, getting it on the, the absentee ballots, whether we could have a special election. Turns out that the attorney says n, that we absolutely can do that. So, um, it's going to be my recommendation that we, um, allow for a special election in the, the June, um, June, was it June fourteenth? Is that the date, Steve?
Y- yes.
June fourteenth? Yep, when the school budget's on, and when there's a primary election, that we allow for a special election to elect, um, someone to fill the, um, seat left vacant by Counsel Tuttle's, um, death, and, um, they would serve through, to the end of that term, the end of December thirty-first, if they chose to run again, they could run again in November election, but there would be a special election. So, I guess I would love to hear discussion, um, to me, that seems the-
Uh.
-best way to, to, to do that, so we would need to have a, a motion to do that-
I'll, I'll move.
And then we would go on. Go ahead, Bob.
I'll move, we, uh, uh, I'll move, we ha-
I'm sorry, Bob, you're, we're losing you, and I cannot hear you.
For Tuttle's term.
Say that again, can you repeat it, Bob? I didn't hear it.
Any better?
No.
Right, any better?
You're-
I, I heard enough, so I think I can repeat what you're saying.
Move to approve the process for having a special election? Was that the motion? Okay, we have a second for that.
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Martel. So the motion was made by Counselor Stackpole to proceed with a special election, um, to fill the vacant city council seat, and a second by, who made that again? Oh, Counselor Martel. Okay, any more discussion? I'll ta- call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. Well, at least we're back to unanimous votes. Okay, so now I have something that I have to insert in here that, um, is a, an additional item, so unless there's objection, which we really need to do, because then I have two different things that we need to get on the warrant. So this would be twenty-two dash two-one-nine dash zero-one. Order to sign the municipal warrant to call for a special municipal election on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and to designate a shortened nomination process as allowed by Thirty A M R S two-five-two-eight-four E to fill the vacant unexpired term of the city council beginning June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two as follows. Nomination papers will be made available beginning Wednesday, April sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and signed nomination papers must be returned to the city clerk by the close of business on Friday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion approve, uh, motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any discussion? I think it's pretty clear what it would allow us to do. So seeing no discussion, I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous. Okay. Order to, twenty-two dash one-eight-one dash zero-one. Order to sign the municipal warrant to call for a June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two school budget validation referendum. I have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martel. I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, and I will remind counselors, we need four counselors to sign these. I will sign them to ea- this evening, both of those warrants, but I need at least three of you to come into the office and sign those this week. Okay?
Will those be with Sue, Mayor?
Pardon me?
Will they be with Larissa or with Sue?
No, I think-
They're with the Larissa.
They're with Lar- with Larissa. So you might, a- and so if you come, they'll be in her, her basket. Bring your keys to get in the door, just in case she's not in here at that moment. Don't anti- you know, unless you're gonna call before you come to make sure she's here, try to, you know, be aware that sometimes she's just not always just sitting at the desk waiting for us to show up. So I'm counting on you, I don't have to send out text messages. Okay, oh my gosh, finally at this piece. Okay. Twenty-two dash two-zero-one dash zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Twelve Feet Fieldstone Lane identified as tax map R eleven B Lot eighty-nine and further described in a deed, in deeds at Book six-two-nine-eight, page one-twenty, and Book six-nine-eight-one, page two-forty-one, and mortgage recorded at Book six-two-nine-eight, page one-two-two, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen M R S A sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I'll de- I will declare the hearing open, and the city will have a presentation.
Thank you. Uh, Ian Housefield, I'm the Director of Community Development. Um, I also have Aaron Letterer here, um, he's the Code Enforcement Officer that, um, helped with these two, um, properties that you're taking up tonight. We do have two on the agenda, I'll try to get through these as quick as possible. Um, I apologize, um, we'll get going quicker as we, uh, move through them. On the first ones, uh, Twelve Fieldstone Lane, um, the way these'll go is we'll have a hearing to talk about, um, uh, why these properties may or may not be dangerous, talk about what, um, remediation is necessary, um, and then, um, the, if there's an owner present, they would have an opportunity to, to speak, or a party in interest, they would have an opportunity to speak, and we try to resolve, um, what we can. Um, at that point, um, we discuss, um, the, the facts of the matter, um, and, um, the city council may or may not decide to make an adjudgment. And then after that, um, on the two properties, you'll take up one, um, unified order specifying the action that takes place after that. Um, as far as the order goes, um, it is a, it is a, a demolition order, um, and, um, if, if actions aren't taken to rehabilitate the property, um, the property owner or the party in interest has an opportunity, uh, if they demonstrate the ability and willingness, uh, to delay that demolition and, um, and rehabilitate the property, um, in, in, in a variety of manners. So, um, back to the specifically on the, on the first property, um, you talked about already which, um, property it is, um, it's on Fieldstone Lane, um, it's in a generally a single-family, um, neighborhood. Um, the property owner currently is a Lori Cody, and, um, previously, um, also a Michael, um, Cody. Um, she's owned the property since nineteen ninety-four, and together they've owned the property since nineteen ninety-two. Um, this is the deed, uh, that, that demonstrates, um, the ownership to both, um, owners, and then, um, this is the deed, uh, showing Michael, um, um, leaving ownership with, um, Lori. There's a mortgage on this property, so there is a party in interest, um, it is, um, from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Um, this is the notice of hearing, um, that, um, was sent to the parties, um, and, um, and then this was also advertised in the newspaper, um, because on, on three successive weeks, um, there are a number of, uh, Codies in the area, um, and, um, we, we weren't going to look over, um, all, all the world to, to attempt to try and find them. Um, Aaron provided a very detailed notice of violation, um, in your packet, um, there are other notices of violation, um, in there, um, and I'm not going to belabor the points at this point, um, but I will run you through the pictures to, to show so you can see the, the, the issues that are there. Um, the utility report is in the packet for Twelve, um, just want to point out, uh, for Twelve Fieldstone Lane, wanted to point out that the water's been off since two thousand fifteen, so seven years at this point. And we do typically, um, uh, pull a police report, um, just, and, and I don't see anything in here that's, um, out of the ordinary. Um, as far as Fieldstones, uh, the, as far as photographs, again, here's the, um, the location, um, this is the picture, it's a ranch house, um, you can see a lot of, um, growth on top of the house, this is the front door, um, you can see signs that have been posted in the window, um, from this distance you can see, um, uh, where, um, the, the door, uh, surround is, is rotting. Um, other angles of the building, you could see that the basement, um, windows, uh, window in this case is open, and then another one is boarded, uh, you can see that there's also openings up into the attic space as well that aren't closed. Um, the, the growth on the top of the building is quite extensive, um, when you see the building from the back, again, you can also see, um, another window, uh, to the basement that's o- open. My window didn't, my, uh, screen didn't refresh there, um, and then, uh, just another shot of the rear of the building. Um, other, um, um, openings, again, you can see access, um, also the, the electrical meter is absent, it's underground electrical in this area, um, so nothing overhead, but there is no electrical meter present on the building, um, and then you can see, uh, missing steps, um, as well as additional notices on the side of the building. Um, just a, a closer picture of, um, of that face of the building. Um, just putting the camera up against the window, you can see that there's just a variety of household items, um, likely really from two thousand, um, two thousand fifteen, um, hasn't changed much, mostly junk, um, nothing salvageable, um, it's just additional, additional junk. Um, just some specifics, um, about this, uh, more specifics, um, you know, that the, these, these issues related to broken borders and, and generally unmanaged property makes, um, the property attracted to trespassers and vandals, it's unsafe, a fire hazard from that regard, um, the absence of, or, of furnishings, um, it, those are, those are damaged, unusable, they're junk, uh, debris, trash, um, they're fire hazard and unsanitary. Uh, the property is deteriorating, um, it's dilapidated, including its, um, exterior stairs and doors, um, it's dangerous to walk up on those steps, um, it constitutes a threat to health and safety therefore. Though the mortgagee, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, did reach out to Aaron Letterer today, um, regarding, um, one, wondering now, um, why after, uh, numerous years, uh, they needed to get a, a vacant building license, um, so we know that they did receive finally notice of this. Um, this is really the first time that the U.S. Department of Agriculture, um, has, has ever, um, even sought to comply with our local regulations. Um, they are the second largest mortgage holder in the country, um, and, um, they, in this case, um, haven't even proceeded with, um, initiating a foreclosure process to resolve this building. Um, there are, there are some stickers that use, as you mentioned, and, um, um, the, the lack of a vacant building license indicates its abandonment, and, uh, the lack of a meter is unsafe, um, and also a fire hazard. Um, again, I'm not going to walk you through, um, you know, specifically each, um, notice of violation issue, they're all listed out, and the notice of violations that Aaron has proceeded, um, it's, it's my opinion that this property is dangerous, um, for the variety of reasons that you've already heard. Um, Aaron, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, you, you covered it well, um, I will say we have had complaints that the property has been unsecure with the side door open, uh, I have confirmed that upon visitation of the property a couple of times where the side door has been completely open, um, and also complaints regarding, uh, mold and rats coming from the building, so, um, just to mention a couple of the neighborhood complaints.
Thank you. Um, any questions of Aaron or I from the, um, from the city council, uh, before, um, we ask if there's anybody from the owner or party interest here to speak?
Um, uh, can we just go on to, okay, Jonathan, go ahead, I was gonna ask for, if there was anybody here first, and then go to the city council questions, if that's okay?
That's fine, we can do that.
Okay, so is there anyone here, a party of interest or the USDA represented here this evening? I don't think there is, so let's go right on to coun- to questions, city council questions, and Jonathan, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just had a question around whether the taxes were up to date or whether those were behind as well, it does appear that this seems like it's been abandoned for quite some time. Maybe you could speak to that.
The taxes are current, um, the only item of interest is, is that the water's been off since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, and has the USDA been paying those taxes, or, or the previous owner on the, on record?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, the mortgagee has been paying it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? And when you spoke to USDA, um, you said they contacted and asked about the vacant building license. Um, did, what was their response to, um, what was happening here this evening?
Um, I did send them the notice of hearing along with what was owed for vacant building license, as well as the vacant building application, uh, that was around one o'clock today, um, and did not hear back, I did ask them to show up tonight, but I never heard back from them.
All right.
And you told me it was-
Any other question? Go ahead, Ian.
Eighteen thousand dollars, if, if I remember that correctly, um, what's currently owed.
Correct, they've never licensed, so they're at eighteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Good. Okay, um, any other questions from any, from counselors? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the hearing. Twenty-two dash two-zero-three dash zero-one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to seventeen M R S A sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding Twelve Fieldstone Lane, what does the city council find are the facts and what does the city council judge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attests to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the owner has owned the single dwelling unit building, the property, since nineteen ninety-four, but abandoned the building inappropriately, allowing a single-family dwelling to be used for no purpose other than a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. B, the building is abandoned as defined in Thirty A M R S A section three-one-zero-six-B and City Code section one-four-nine dash six-point-three, and as evidenced by no water service to the building since August two thousand fifteen, and also therefore no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are boarded and broken, and the property is generally unmanaged and is therefore inviting to trespassers and vandals, and therefore unsafe and a fire hazard. Personal property and furnishings indicating habitable occupancy are absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard, it is unsanitary. The property is deteriorating and dilapidated, including its exterior stairs and doors, a danger to unsuspecting visitors, constituting a threat to public health and safety. Mortgagee has failed to initiate foreclosure proceedings despite the property conditions and absence of occupancy and obvious abandonment by the owner. A mortgagee has taken steps to take position of the property such as putting stickers on the doors and windows indicating vacancy. A mortgagee has failed to maintain a vacant building license further indicative of abandonment, an electrical meter is absent on the building, an unsafe situation, and a fire hazard. C, the building is dilapidated as evidenced by plant overgrowth on the roof and rot on the exterior of the building around doors and windows. D, multiple inspections, most recently on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, found violations of City Code, Chapter ninety dash thirteen B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference, dangerous premises due to lack of maintenance and decay, dangerous premises due to, due to lack of security, basement windows open, exterior disrepair and lack of maintenance, rotten damage, exterior stairs and doors in poor repair, electrical system hazards, broken exterior outlets, accumulation of rubbish and garbage, interior conditions unsanitary, dangerous structure, electrical meter removed. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers are judged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsafe and unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is improper for the occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation and abandonment, and is otherwise dangerous to life and property because the abandoned building and unmanaged and uncared-for condition of the property contributes to blight, acts as an attractive nuisance for vandalism and other illegal acts, all of which also negatively impact the property value, health, safety, and welfare of surrounding properties and their occupants and their well-being. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Martel made the motion, and the second by Counselor Stackpole? Okay, motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole? Did I lose him?
No, I said, yes, yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Sorry.
That's all right.
Now I do.
That's okay, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
Uh, and I am also, yes, that is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash two-zero-four dash zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Twenty-Six Robert Street identified as tax map K thirty, Lot twelve, and further described in a deed recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds at Book one-two-one-two-three, page two-forty-five, and mortgage recorded at Book one-six-five-four-two, page three-nine-nine, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen M R S A sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will open the hearing with the city presentation.
Thank you. Um, I will get started. So this is the property, it's on Robert Street, um, this is actually the police department, it's this area highlighted in yellow, um, it is owned by a Judy Roy, um, uh, who has owned it since two thousand two. Um, it is owned by a Judy Roy, um, uh, who has owned it since two thousand two. Um, and, um, this is the deed, um, from Roger Godin to, um, Eugene Roy and Judy Roy. Um, and then as well, um, a number of mortgages. Um, this is the mortgage referenced, uh, for a, a party and interest. Um, that is currently, uh, and I'm gonna jump around here, I apologize, held by Wilmington Trust. Um, there have been another number of foreclosure a- actions, um, taken. Uh, the most recent, um, is the, uh, judgment of foreclosure and sale. Um, and it is my understanding, um, that, um, that this, um, um, sale will take place, um, potentially, or auction will take place, uh, later this month. So, finally, it will be foreclosed. Uh, this is the notice of hearing as filed in the Registry of Deeds, um, to Judy Roy and, um, the Wilmington Trust. Um, and, um, receipt of that, um, by, um, their legal counsel, um, Ben Dutton McHugh. Um, this was also advertised in the paper, um, for three successive weeks. Um, again, um, in this case, we, um, there, we, um, did our due diligence to find Ms. Roy, um, but went, went, went as far as we felt was appropriate, um, to, to locate her. Um, there isn't notice of violation on this property as well. This isn't, this is the, um, last of, of many. Um, a variety of entities have been sent notice by first class and certified mail. Um, I'm not going to go through each specific violation, you'll see some of those in the pictures. Um, this, um, and, and Aaron can answer some questions about them too. Um, in this case, the water's been off since, um, two thousand fifteen, so actually same, um, same era, um, of, as the other one that the water turned off. Um, and in this case, um, the other accounts have, um, zero balances. Um, there, there are two pages of, um, police issues here. Um, nothing, um, nothing terribly, um, out of the ordinary. Um, but, um, it, and, and they do go back, um, to two thousand nine as well. On the photographs, again, there's the picture of where it's at. Um, the property as visible from the street looks like this. You can see some notices in the front, um, window. Um, this is the, the side of the building, uh, the main door. Um, I walked up on the steps, um, it's, it's very spongy, enough so that, um, it feels as if it might collapse just going to the front door. Um, that really needs to be resolved, um, it's dangerous to people who might go to the front door. Um, and, um, the, um, there's, so you can see that the electrical, uh, has been, uh, disconnected. There are two cars, um, parked on either side of this building. I couldn't give you a good explanation of why. Um, it could be, I would guess, um, um, neighbors, um, parking here, um, either on our, just to, for their own interest or attempting to make it look like it's, uh, somewhat occupied. Um, no one spoke to me, um, last week as I went, um, around the property to, um, um, to look at it. Um, so I, I, I didn't, I didn't have any conversations with anybody. Aaron might have. Uh, you could see some, also some missing siding, um, so, some places in the main building where the build, the siding's coming off. And you can also see some issues related to the integrity of this front porch, um, as well. A picture from the side, I wouldn't say that I have anything, uh, note, uh, from this perspective. Um, and, um, neither from the rear perspective on the main building. Here's a picture from the back, um, and, um, same, again, this looks relatively intact. Um, I, I would draw your attention that Aaron took a picture of, um, the roof. I believe it was up in this area, it's missing a number of shingles. Um, so, um, it's very possible that the roof has started to leak, um, as well. Um, you know, that there are very limited, uh, pictures just, um, of the interior. This room looks relatively cleaned out, um, but, um, it's, it's, some of the other ones, um, are less so. I don't see any indication of moisture in the main building, um, but maybe Aaron has more to add. Um, a fair amount of, um, um, material left in the basement of the, um, uh, the main building. However, I can't speak to more than what you see here in this picture. Um, the, the back building is the major concern here. Um, this, um, this building, for starters, is clad in asbestos or transite siding. Um, not that that, um, is, is dangerous alone, it's just the dilapidated state of this building as a whole. You can see, um, some, um, boarded windows, boarded doors in this picture. Um, and, um, just, um, general, um, um, unkemptness of the property in this case. Um, a fair amount of material, um, in the interior of, um, this building. Um, you can see some doors, uh, old TVs, um, which, um, present disposal issues. Um, tires, um, just a variety of things, and this is a hole in the wall. Um, and, and then just general, general junk, um, just unsanitary conditions in, in this, um, in this back building. Um, some, um, light tubes, um, and then it looks like another television and, and some other lighting fixtures. Um, again, in this case, there's a second meter. Um, I think in the past, this building might have had a, um, a second or even a third unit in it, judging by the fact that there are two meters. It actually has a secondary electrical service, um, again, both, uh, disconnected and, um, both unsafe, uh, from that perspective. Um, these windows are boarded, it looks like they've replaced some of the, um, siding in places and other places it's falling off. Um, the backside of this building, although it faces the police department, um, is open. Um, there's, um, you can, you, um, one could access the backside, um, by, by stepping into this building. That's a, that's a, um, a bathroom, um, at that location. Um, the, the fact that it's not maintained, um, sewer gas is, is a real risk. Um, and, um, if, if, um, if it's open in that way and, and, um, it's, it's clear that there's, um, it's, it's not vented it, and properly. Um, so, that, that's the interior, um, there's other openings, and then you can see a lot of plant growth. Um, this door appears slightly, um, ajar, but, um, excuse me, there, there's another opening with, um, sorry, um, with, um, heating equipment, um, on the interior, um, that's a water heater, um, some electrical wires, and you can see the plants growing through the building. Um, I, I couldn't tell whether this building, this door that I was speaking of just a second ago was ajar or open, um, or, or even locked. Um, but I wasn't willing to walk up on top of that deck, um, given its, um, state of dilapidation. Um, so, um, that's, those are the pictures. Um, to be specific, um, you know, we've got, um, it's, it's been, you know, it's, it's, it's been sitting like this on a very important road for Sanford, um, um, for, since two thousand fifteen in an uninhabitable state. Um, it's, it's very much a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, there's been no water service since two thousand fifteen, um, it hasn't been occupied, um, legally since that time. Uh, doors and windows are open, boarded, broken, it's unmanaged. Uh, it's inviting to trespassers and vandals, and it's unsafe and a fire hazard. Uh, the lack of personal property and furnishings, uh, in, indicate that it, that i- it is abandoned. Um, and the remaining personal property is damaged, unusable. It's describable as junk, debris, trash, possibly hazardous, and a fire hazard and unsanitary. Uh, the property ha- is deteriorating, it's, um, it's, including its porches, decks, and exterior stairs. Um, the stairs are, um, a danger to unsuspecting visitors. Um, and, and plants grow up the side of the building and through openings. Uh, this all constitutes a, uh, threat to public health and safety. Uh, the electrical power's been disconnected, yeah, and, um, sorry.
I, I think, I, I just know, here, I'm just saying that I think you covered that. I'm just curious if there's anybody here, anybody, um, with an interest in the building who i- is here to, um, respond.
There is, and, and, uh, I just, I, I've, I've talked a little bit about this with, um, um, Ben Dutton McHugh, and I appreciate that they're here to talk about this. We talked through, um, some of these deficiencies and, and started talking about what a, a rehabilitation plan, um, might look like, um, and, and how this, um, if, if your order tonight would impact the sale, and, and as I explained, um, if you were to find it to be dangerous, um, you know, even, even so, there are some serious, serious deficiencies, and any future buyer would, would need to correct those, um, to make this property safe. So, but, but I'm sure they have more to add.
Who's here this evening for, um, the owner or a party in interest?
Good evening, my name is Kylie Germain. I am an attorney from Bendet McHugh, and I represent Bay Servicing, the servicer of the mortgage and the current mortgagee of record, Wilmington Savings, uh, as trustee. Um, I have spoken to my clients, they are currently getting bids to address these issues that, um, Mr. Houseill has raised to us. And, um, we are currently scheduled for sale on April twenty-first at ten a.m. at the Holiday Inn by the Bay in Portland. But my client is more than willing to postpone it weekly as required by state law, um, in order to address these issues. And it is going to be something I need to talk to them about, whether we would like to continue postponing it so we can address this, or sell it as is, probably much less with the, um, it would be up to us to let any potential buyer know of these major issues, even though we do sell properties as is, whereas with no guarantees, representations, or warranties. But my firm and I personally do believe there is a, there is a line on, um, liability and just a moral stance on selling a property like this that is obviously an issue. Um, but we have, we do have a plan, we are looking at bids, and the mortgagee is aware, and they did foreclose successfully, so they do technically have, um, possession of the property currently.
Okay, thank you. Questions by counselors? Um, Counsel Martell?
So, um, I guess I'd like a little feedback from maybe Steve or Ian as far as maybe a recommended course of action, since we do have what looks like some movement on a sale for this. Um, you know, if, if we have, if there's a buyer that's planning on, you know, renovating and fixing this up within the next couple of months or something, then, um, maybe it would save us some, some red tape. Interfere some comments from that.
Well, um, I would say that the, the, the process works, um, very well. We've, we've engaged in this a number of times, um, with, you know, that, um, I think it's really important. I guess my recommendation is that you do proceed with the dangerous building order. Uh, reminds me that, you know, the way that we've been, um, processing these from here is that there is a, um, second confirmation of your, the, the order that you take tonight, um, at your next city council meeting. Um, so there, there are questions about what your, what orders you're, you're taking tonight. Um, you, there is an opportunity to revisit that, um, at that time. Um, and, um, the way that this has successfully worked in the past is it identifies those issues, you know, those, those minimum property defects, um, that need to be corrected, um, that, um, Ms., um, Ms., um, Germain, Germain, um, um, spoke about, I apologize. Um, but then also holding the develop, or holding the future owner's feet to the fire, um, to make sure that they, they do have a rehab plan. So, it's, it's not simply enough that it gets sold, it's that it's, um, that it's rehabbed and, and not continues to be a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Counsel Stackpole? You're muted still, Steve, Bob?
Uh, I think it's appropriate, I'm gonna make a motion, we extend the meeting till ten o'clock, ten p.m. It's, I've seen it's nine twenty-seven right now.
Um.
And, and I'm not trying to end the meeting, I'm trying to legally.
Right, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, we're in the middle of a, of a hearing. So, maybe after we finish this one, if we wanna do that, but I'd rather, I, I get it. We don't, but I think we're in the middle of, of this particular hearing, and I would hope that, um, we wouldn't need to have a vote to extend because, uh, this is a legal hearing that we're going through right now.
Yeah, okay.
We do have to complete it. Thank you though, Bob, I appreciate it. Counselor, um, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I find, I, personally, I'd like to proceed with, um, declaring it because I find that that actually, um, keeps the feet to the fire on getting this rehabbed because a lot of times people have told us things and it actually hasn't happened. But, um, if we keep the feet to the fire, um, I, I think things will happen. I think in some respects, I've known a lot of people who always wanna fix it up so that they make more money. Um, typically, that's where most of our properties are coming from. It's where people are like, well, I was gonna fix it up, I was gonna fix it up, I was gonna fix it up. And now, a lot of times they don't have the wherewithal, and taking less money and getting it sold and getting it to the hands of someone who will actually get the thing done tends, tends to work well as well. So, I'd rather continue to move ahead with this. So, I'll make a motion, do you want, no, you have to make.
Uh, wait, no, not yet, nope, there's no motions, this is the hearing, Counsel Brink?
I would have to agree with more, I'd keep going.
Thank you.
I just don't wanna return and go through the whole thing again.
That's right, I agree. Um, um, Kylie, go ahead, you have your hand up. You're muted.
I clicked it, uh, it never works. I would just like to let it be known that my client, the bank and mortgagee have, we have no, um, objection to the property being labeled as dangerous and a nuisance to the community. Um, and I do believe, I, we are currently scheduled, like I said, for that sale. I cannot guarantee it'll happen because my client may decide to postpone it in order to take care of those issues on their own. Um, like I said, we're receiving bids for it already, and they do fully recognize the issues that are aware, that are present. Um, but I just, in sum, would like to make it known that we have no objection to it being declared dangerous, and we are working on it, and it will get fixed, whether we sell it or we do it ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by counselors before I close the hearing?
Aaron, do you have anything else to add? I, I apologize, I, I don't know, Aaron, do you have anything you, any specific information you need to speak about? That wasn't covered?
Again, just neighbor complaints regarding, um, individuals who don't, do not own the property parking there. Um, and, um, unsecure buildings. I have gone personally called MCS, which is the servicing company, uh, that cares for the property a number of times about the back door being open. So, it ju- it's been a number of years of just been a, a, a very, a nuisance, especially since it's right next to a park, uh, which is of, uh, concern. So, uh, lots of complaints, it's good to, um, have this process to address those violations as well. Uh, a couple of those ones that you didn't mention are on the violation notice, but you guys can look through your packets to see those.
Thank you. I'm gonna, um, unless there's any other comments or questions, I'm going to close the hearing. Um, and I'll just go on to the order for this particular, for twenty-six Robert Street, twenty-two dash two zero five dash zero one, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to seventeen MRSA, sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding twenty-six Robert Street. What does the city council find are the facts? And what does the city council adjudge, based on the testimony of those present and other test, evidence presented and made part of the record? The Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the owner has owned the buildings, property since two thousand two, but abandoned the buildings inappropriately, inappropriately allowing the property to be used for no pur- purpose other than a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. B, the building is abandoned as defined in thirty A, MRSA, section three, one, zero, six, B, and City Code, section one four nine, dash, six point three, and is evidenced by no water service to the building since September two thousand fifteen, and also therefore no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are open, boarded and broken, and the property is generally unmanaged and is therefore inviting to trespassers and vandals and therefore unsafe and a fire hazard. Personal property and furnishings indicating habitable occupancy or absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous. And is a fire hazard and is unsanitary, the property is deteriorating, including its porches, decks, and exterior stairs. A danger to unsuspecting visitors, and plants grow up the side of the building and through openings which together constitute a threat to public sa- health and safety. Electrical power is connected to the buildings, but electrical meters are absent from the buildings, an unsafe situation, and a fire hazard. B, the property is dilapidated as evidenced by plant overgrowth, broken and open windows, dilapidated decks and exterior stairs, and visibly poor conditions on the exterior and interior of the building, including visible presumed positive asbestos siding. D, multiple inspections and most recently on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, found violations of City Code, chapter ninety dash thirteen B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Dangerous property. Dangerous property not sec, dangerous property not secure and open, exterior walls rotting and open and not in good repair, ma, unmaintained, broken, cracked window glass, missing roof shingles, accumulation of rubbish and gar, garbage, electrical systems hazard, exposed wiring and fixtures, plumbing hazard, system hazards, broken plumbing, deck porch and balcony is deteriorated, unsafe and blocked, unsanitary interior conditions. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsafe and unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is improper for the occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and abandonment, and is otherwise dangerous to life and property because the abandoned building and unmanaged and uncared-for condition of the property contrib, contributes to blight, acts as an attractive nuisance for vandalism and other illegal acts, all of which also negatively impact the property value, health, safety, and welfare of surrounding properties and their occupants and their well-being. I have a motion to approve.
We approve?
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any discussion? Call the roll, Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. We have a combination order to finish, um, it shouldn't take us longer than five minutes, I hope, so without objection from anybody on the council, I'm going to continue with this so that we can finish this legal proceeding. The last two items on the agenda are combined into one, uh, I think it's twenty-two dash two zero six and, dash, zero one, and twenty-two dash two zero seven, zero one. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented for twelve Fieldstone Lane under agenda item twenty-two dash two zero one, dash, zero one, and twenty-six Robert Street under agenda item twenty-two dash two zero four, dash, zero one, and then making findings of fact and judging twelve Fieldstone Lane under agenda item twenty-two dash two zero three, dash, zero one, and twenty-six Robert Street under agenda item twenty-two dash two zero five, zero one, to be a dangerous building and nuisance pursuant to seventeen M R S A sections twenty-eight fifty-one, twenty-eight fifty-nine, the city council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate, appropriate corrective actions taken for order twenty-two dash two zero six, dash, zero one regarding twelve Fieldstone Lane, and for order twenty-two dash two zero seven, dash, zero one regarding twenty-six Robert Street. It is ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, property is to be immediately secured within twenty-four hours, and be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any, all rubbish, debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, hazardous waste, and dangerous materials from the property. And be it further ordered, if the owner or party in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within thirty days of recording this order and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner, the order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiencies listed as part of the findings of fact as herein set forth are corrected. Property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes, and meets all permitting and inspection requirements, and there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. And be it further ordered that the city clerk record this order in the New York County Registry of Deeds, and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the persons as required by law. And be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager here, hereby authorized and directed to ask for bids for the abatement of the said nuisance. And be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with, and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the ordered corrective action at municipal expense and recover all expenses, including reasonable attorney fees by means of a special tax or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court pursuant to main rule of civ, civil procedure, A D B. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that is unanimous vote. We are past the time, unless you wanna continue with council member comments, it's twenty of ten, I'm inclined to, uh, declare us adjourned unless somebody objects. I see a dog over there. Okay, then I will declare us adjourned, see you in, um, I don't know, a lo, a couple weeks. Thank you all.
Bye.
Thank you.